Participation will always be voluntary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the presentation from the Florence Sawyer School. So, Mr. Bates, are you going to introduce?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am thrilled to give you folks, by virtue of our coordinators, a little bit of information about a tremendous addition to the Florence Sawyer School. It's called Girls on the Run, and I will turn it over to Lauren and Kelsey and Jen to explain the program.
And we'll have you come to the front, please. And if you could introduce yourselves. Thank you, Principal Bates, and tell us what role you play in this school. That would be terrific, and I know some of you are kind of new to us, so we'd love for you to tell us. Feel free to sit down. You don't have to stand. You're welcome to sit if you'd like.
Thank you.
So we'll pass around a couple of fires before we get started, just some informational pieces.
Thank you for having us tonight. So I'm Lauren Saviet. I'm one of the school counselors at Florence Sawyer. I work with students in grades four through eight.
I'm Kelsey Basardette. I work within our therapeutic program as a school adjustment counselor/school social worker with our -- it's our early elementary school.
And I'm Jennifer Huback, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Florence Sawyer. We're really excited to share with you tonight about Girls on the Run. We have a couple of slides to share. I'm not going to read through all of the details on the slide because I know you can all see that. Really, we want to share with you what the program means to us and the impact it has had on Florence Sawyer School. The technology, okay? So Girls on the Run is a national nonprofit organization, actually, expanding international. It's a 10-week program. Students attend 20 sessions that accumulate as a celebratory 5K at the end of the program. It's open to all girls, grades three through five. We joke that it's essentially a social-emotional learning curriculum disguised as a 5K training program. So it's a really nice way to merge social-emotional learning and that curriculum that's so, so important for students, especially at those ages, with getting them physical exercise and getting them really engaged and involved in the program, and a nice way for them to feel a real concrete accomplishment at the end of it. Not only can they develop skills that they've developed, but they have a really tangible set of goals that each week they're building up the laps that they're doing, and at the end, they get to celebrate with family and peers at the 5K.
Absolutely. And just a little bit of history about how Girls on the Run came to us. It was an organization that I think we all kind of knew about. We didn't necessarily know how to bring it to our own district, and it turns out they're very accessible and they're super supportive about having Girls on the Run in the schools. And we were really grateful because we had the response from the community that we were hoping for. I think at first we were a little nervous because you need a certain amount of students to be able to go forward with your program. However, we ended up with actually over the number that we were anticipating or could even allow, so it really worked out. And we do have still an expressed interest from other families for the future seasons, hopefully, you know, other people that would like to participate. So it's been great, you know, to kind of work together. Yeah, absolutely.
It was a program I'd actually heard about years back working in a previous district and had been wanting for years to become a part of. When I moved back to the Central Massachusetts District, we're really lucky that while it's a national organization, the Worcester County chapter is very active and accessible. My family got involved through the Worcester County Board, and after volunteering at a couple of 5Ks and talking to staff members and moving to Bolton, it felt like, this is so great that I'm at a school that supports this. We talked to Joel and had his support, and it's been really exciting to see it brought to life this year. So while the mission and vision up behind you are the national organization's mission and vision, there's really different content with what we wanted to bring to Sawyer, along with the district goal of incorporating social-emotional learning. I think it's something that the three of us talk about all of the time, like, how can we possibly find more time during the day to get every possible opportunity in for students? We hear so much need from students. As we know, they're all individuals developing, and they face so many different challenges that rather than come at social-emotional challenges from an intervention perspective, we really wanted to build up skills and give them some preventable skills, which is what I feel Girls on the Run has been doing for us.
Yeah, absolutely. So essentially, you know, the mission for Girls on the Run is to empower young girls and young women to make positive decisions, to have control over the decisions that they're making, and using that, you know, very specific empowerment piece, you know, for the physical, for the physical connection, for the mind, you know, the whole mind-body-soul connection. So we've seen a really great impact for the girls, especially in terms of connecting and building positive and safe relationships with our coaches and with the other kiddos on our team. I think a lot of the girls who came to us were seeking out that connectedness, and it can be a component that's missing for a lot of kids, how to make friends, how to keep friends, how to deal with uncomfortable emotions and things like that, and then also, you know, how to be healthy and, you know, physical. And we, you know, hear girls a lot of times who are like, I, you know, not only did I resolve this conflict with a friend appropriately, but I also exceeded my lap goal that I wanted to accomplish for the week. So they're just seeing success for themselves, and it is a pocket of students that might not see that success in other areas as easily or like a tangible success. So it's really nice for the girls to be able to come together and have almost like a common goal that they know they want to work on with that social-emotional need, and then also like the physical goal of completing a 5K is, you know, something tangible that you can work towards. So it's been really great. So these are some of the core values that we work towards. You know, like I said, building that mind-body-soul connection, definitely building the connections with the staff, and, you know, assuming positive intent is something that I think shifted my thinking. You know, we talk a lot about addressing negative thoughts, and that's a really challenging concept, and, you know, it's hard to not ruminate in those negative thoughts. And so we do a ton of processing with our girls, and sometimes that can kind of overshadow the running component at times. However, you know, and we'll go through in a little, but the girls definitely feel like it's a safe opportunity for them to talk about issues and things that they're experiencing as they're moving through their week, because we get to see them twice a week, which is really special, that we can see them so frequently. And then this is just a little model that Girls on the Run shares, you know, just to kind of show like the flow and the emphasis of what they put on caring competence, confidence, character, and connection, and then while also marrying that with the contribution. So something that the girls also are working towards, because, you know, right now, definitely the work that they're doing is on themselves and their skills, and now we're kind of start going to focus on the community contribution. So something we can do to also give back to the community as well.
That is totally girl-driven, and will be happening in our next couple of lessons so we can report back on what they are trying to do to help the community.
Absolutely. So a practice, this is what a practice with Girls on the Run might look like. Like I said, I won't go through everything, but, you know, we do like a snack in a processing time where we look back on each week has a theme, so it might be making connections or making friends, dealing with emotions, things like that. So we will look at a concept that happened in a previous week, and we'll ask the girls, how did that concept work for you this week? You know, what did, what worked for you, what didn't work for you? What are we still working on, or what would you like more of? And so we spend a lot of time on that processing piece, and the girls really are very willing to share, and I think it's fostered a really safe environment for girls to be able to share. The girls are very understanding with each other and offer a lot of great feedback. So the idea is that we can kind of take a step back so that they can be allowed to share and process with each other and support each other and sort of like problem-solve independently. So it's been cool. And then we also tie in our workouts, of course, so eventually we have to get to the running part, which, you know, we try to marry also with the concept that we're promoting for that week. So last week it was communication, and we went through, you know, some of those "I feel", "I need" statements, and so the girls had to do like a running drill, and it said, you know, "I feel", and they, you know, then they had to do another lap, and then the other girls had to say, "What, you know, when you", and then, what's the next? "Because", and then "I would like for you too", and it was really hard. So it was even hard for me to remember sometimes, and so we did it so often that it became very routine to the girls. And then, as I saw them throughout the week, they were, I witnessed them using those concepts with other peers when they needed it. So it was nice to see that translating into the school day, and they were resolving, you know, some things that were coming up for them independently, whereas before they might need, have needed, you know, some staff support, they were more independent with that process.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah. So speaking of the girls' responses, that's really what we want to share with you tonight. The, one of the handouts that we passed around was a research study that was done by an independent group in 2000, I don't want to say the wrong date, but I think 2016. So that gives us a lot of really strong backing statistics to support why it matters, but I think everyone in this room probably already knows why it matters for students at this age. It's really the level of competence, the rapid rate at which we see it dropping for students without some social-emotional intervention is concerning, and the research really supported that having an intervention like Girls on the Run makes a significant difference. But what we wanted to share, I'm going to pass around a few of these, just so you can take a little look at what the girls had to say themselves about what it means to them. The research is one thing, but seeing it in action from the girls is a whole other thing. We know we had some students who would have loved to be here tonight, but they are third through fifth graders who are so scheduled, they're so, so busy through school. So we wanted to bring their work to you, and they were comfortable with us sharing these. We've seen one, one that I'll hang on to because it may need a little spelling translation, but we have one girl who, she was comfortable with us sharing this. She has struggled with peers, has a harder time than most connecting with others and seeing the value in herself. And one of our early lessons was about negative self-talk and changing that to more positive self-talk, and as they completed every couple of laps, girls paused to write down some positive traits that they knew about themselves so that if negative self-talk starts to come in, they're already armed with some phrases that they know about themselves that they can come back to, and she was stuck. Couldn't come up with anything, watched her start to write nothing, and before coaches even had a chance to intervene, some of the girls in the grade above her stopped in and said, "What are you talking about? You're awesome. I remember in circle you shared this and you gave that example. Let's do a lap." And then she came back, crossed out nothing, and I know it sounds like the most cheesy thing, but wrote verbatim, "I'm awesome." And it was so nice to hear that, hearing that from her peers, running with them, being involved, has made a difference. So when she was asked what Girls on the Run means to you, she wrote "feeling safe", to feel safe with others, and that's been great. At our last, in our last processing, she was the first one to raise her hand and immediately say, "I feel when you, because I would like for you too." Like she had been practicing it all week. So we've seen some really tangible outcomes from the girls, which is great.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, thinking back to, you know, we've been in their shoes before, and I think these are those fundamental years where we do want to start, you know, if a student is lacking in that self-esteem, we want to start building that. We want to be building the connections, and for them to be able to have a safe environment and safe relationships to look back on, you know, it's hugely important. And, you know, we've been so grateful because we have our administrative support, which has been awesome, and especially with, you know, building that confidence and that, you know, female empowerment. And it's, yeah, so it's, you know, it's been awesome to have the girls expressing what they need, how they feel, and, yeah, they're doing a great job with that.
And full staff support as well. We do have, we're close to the end of our time, but we do have the 5K coming up mid-November, and it's been really great to see not only the coaching staff and our administration, but all of the teachers get involved. We keep having more and more staff check in, "How's Girls on the Run going? Oh, I saw you guys outside. I heard a little of your circle." And we're inviting all staff members if they're interested in joining the 5K. Every girl that runs it runs with a running buddy, so they have to have an adult with them as they complete the 5K. It is mostly running, a little bit of skipping and hopping and walking along the way as well. So some of our staff members are joining as running buddies for girls that aren't yet a family member. And of course, we handed out the fire as well. Anyone of you is more than welcome to come join, even if you'd like to just come check it out and see what all the hub is about.
Thank you so much. Questions?
Thank you.
I have a quick question about Florence Sawyer. The curriculum that you deliver, does that come from something established, or is that just something that you collaborate?
It is. So the Girls on the Run, national organization, puts out the curriculum, and then we all attended a training to go through the curriculum, get trained in all the components of it and practice with each other. They actually offer three different versions of the curriculum so that we can continue season after season, and girls can come back if they would like to.
And it starts in August, end of August?
We start the second week, the second full week in September.
Okay. That's great. This is great.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Leah. I wonder if there's a companion, boys on the run?
We have actually asked. Definitely. We've talked about that. We have. The head of the Worcester chapter. Right now, there are provisions in the group for boys who would like to participate can work with the chapter and their local sites to participate, but right now there isn't a full companion, which would be a wonderful thing to say.
Leah.
I also wonder if you guys plan to share out with the other schools you would like in the district?
Yeah, definitely. I would love to collaborate, so we can think about that for sure.
With it being our first season, we're in the fingers process. We've got this off the ground, and so far it has all been, I hate to be so overly cheesy, but it has been such a great experience so far. So I really can't wait to share it with others and see if we can get other schools involved too.
Mary? So is this after school?
Yes. Two stays and three stays.
Okay. So you volunteer your time, or is...
It is. All the coaches, anyone that coaches Girls on the Run has to be on a volunteer basis, so it's all volunteer.
I'd like to thank you for volunteering your time. This is such an exciting program, and the girls need this so much at this age, and the fact that you're doing that with your expertise makes it that much more important and meaningful, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. We appreciate that, and I think, you know, your support, our administration's support, it's all been, you know, really helpful in getting, you know, Girls on the Run off the ground. And, you know, I think I was talking to Joel the other day and just kind of processing about the program, and I was like, you know, it's, these girls come to us with really great skills. They have some really great skills, and we're just trying to bolster those connections. And Joel kind of reminded me, like, you know, you're making a difference in a pocket of girls, you know, and that's really important. So, you know, I think it, as big or small as we can do, you know, it goes both ways, so we're happy to be doing it, yeah.
Joel. Not Joel, I mean Todd.
Yeah, no, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to chime in and say that my daughter participated in this program. She's 13 now, eighth grade, going into ninth grade, and the results that it had in her confidence level alone and the connection she made with the teacher or the advisor who was involved in that, and she did it at upper elementary into going into middle school, and just the tremendous impact that had on her, so I'm wearing my dad hat right now. Thank you for the work and the presentation, because it's a great program, especially for some kind of girls who need that.
How many girls are involved this year?
16.
16.
They usually cap it at 15, but they let us stay 16 because we were pushing the waitlist.
Oh my goodness. So I noticed on the sheet on the run that there's a fees that have to be paid to participate. How are those covered?
So any of the, the girls that are registered for the program, they don't pay to register for the 5K, so those are for anyone in the community that wants to participate. There is a fee for the program, but the scholarship program through Girls on the Run is really strong, so anyone that was interested and isn't able to afford the program fee talks directly with the chapter, with the local council, and they do scholarships.
I would agree, and I love the way it brings in, you know, the social-emotional learning is one of our big themes for the year, and it's easy to think about it as something linear that's a curriculum, but when it is integrated, the way that it is in the program, it reinforces it and kids' stuff to see the connection. So thank you, and thank you for volunteering to do it.
Thank you for having us.
And I just want to say too, I love your energy. Oh my goodness, you can just feel it, and I love the enthusiasm that you bring into this. I just think it's amazing. I would agree with absolutely everything that Kathy said too. I'm so grateful, and Mary, thank you for your efforts with this, and for the first year to be at 16 is fabulous, fabulous.
We've had some great success stories that, there's a student who typically acts out under, you know, frustration or will shut down, and the other day she was able to just talk to Kelsey and say, "I was feeling, you know, this way. Could you not, could you please not do that again?", instead of just acting out or, you know, shutting down. It's huge.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much for coming and joining us. I would really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
That's exciting, very exciting.
I just have a couple of things. Just that the next regular school committee, school committee meeting will be on November 20th, and members of the school committee will be attending the MASC, MASSS conference in Hyannis, which runs from November 6th through the 8th or 9th. Most people stay a day or two. So who all from the committee is, Joseph's going, Mary's going, I'm going, and then Brooke and Todd are going. So we will, the people attending will bring back reports about the things that we attended that we thought would be important for us to share, and so in the future, if folks can even just go down for a day, it's well worth it, and you can always look at the programs that they send out to see where you want to target your time. So I'm looking forward to it. Okay, the student representative report. Mr. Didi Bonico, who is our student council representative?
I'm a high school senior. That's right. I think right now, let's see, it's 20 past 6:00. I think Ibi is probably warming up with the rest of the student band as they perform their fall concert tonight, so I'm stepping in and pinch hitting for her. A lot of music on the, on the report this week. There's a band concert tonight at 7:00, choir concert is next Wednesday. Last weekend, the high school band invited 7th and 8th grade musicians to play at the football game, and they sounded great, and by all accounts, the kids had a lot of fun. So that's a nice way of growing the music program as kids get ready to come up to the high school. At Hale, the music department will be running a poinsettia sale as a fundraiser in the month of November, and the Stowe Friends of Music hosts a winter dance for middle schoolers. Also in Stowe at the Center School, Ms. Dyer is teaching cooperation and teamwork students through a world music drumming unit. Students are discovering how to listen to each other and work together to achieve a goal. At Luther Burbank, the other end of the district, their brand-new first-ever honors ensemble had its first rehearsal this week. This is an auditioned extracurricular ensemble for instrumental students interested in playing more challenging music. And at the high school, let's see, as far as sports is concerned, the fall season is coming to an end. That means many senior nights. So field hockey is this Thursday, volleyball on Friday, girls soccer Saturday, boys Monday, and there's a football game at home on Friday, so there will be senior nights for all of the athletes on those, at those games. The end of the quarter is just two weeks away, end of the first quarter. The high school is encouraging more student involvement by hosting student voice and engagement sessions. We had the first one a couple weeks ago, and the next session is next Thursday, the 30th, or next Wednesday, the 30th after school. That is on Wednesday, October 30th. And we're bribing kids by encouraging them to come, and we'll feed them pizza. So that's the, that's the hook to get them in. And homecoming is this Saturday. So that's, that's the news from Lake Wobegon.
Just a question, the student engagement day?
Yep.
Were you talking a bit more about what that is?
I will, yeah, I will. It's, as you know, we have PLTs at the school, professional learning teams, and I'm working with three teachers, Maureen DuMay, Matt Biggs, both are biology teachers, and Tim Castner, who's a history teacher, and we're designing conversations, formats for conversations, to have kids come in to talk about what's on their mind as they think about school and to share, and to, you know, as the phrase is, lean in and be a part of what's going on, and be a part of raising questions, discovering answers, and making the kind of change that they want to see. So at our first session, we had, we had about close to 10 kids, and we're hoping, we're hoping next week to double that.
So do I understand, you're creating protocols, something?
Yep.
Okay.
At our last meeting?
Like critical friends type of, well, not, you know, that's the adult level.
Yeah.
But if you, if you had some protocols with those essential questions that could be useful, that makes a lot of sense.
You know, how to have those kinds of conversations and how to disagree agreeably with someone and come to at least understand somebody else's point of view.
Sounds good.
Leah. I actually just sat in on Mary Marata's workshop today at Mass Q, and she outlined something that is fascinating to me with regard to student voice, and it's basically rooted in design thinking of problem-solving, and the protocol that she showed us today seems like it would be great for a student engagement day. So perhaps...
Yep, I've certainly talked to Mary. She's my neighbor, so to speak, at high school.
It's her office, but it's his office.
So we talk, we talk often.
And I only say that because I run a student government organization in my high school, and I thought to myself, as she was sharing it, and she was sharing a science lesson or whatever, I thought, this is perfect for student government.
It is, that whole design thinking process.
Yeah, it's great.
So we had talked, we had spoken earlier when we were talking about PLTs about, I think last year and the year before, there was a report out at some point in the year. So it would be great to, when we have that, to hear what some of the outcomes are. I mean, what was the, what did you start out with, and then what, you know, what came out of it? But also, I think we'd be really interested in hearing from kids who worked with you. Hopefully, some will stick with it. Do they have, they don't have to sign up for the duration?
No, that's a great point. That's a great, no, but several of them are.
Yes, so to hear from them and how they perceive the process and if they see any, anything different, but, but I'm glad it's being, so instead of sleeping in, these kids have to show up for the PLT? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, that was, the first one, of course, was on a late start day, so rather than sleep in, they came, we're hoping on the 30th, which is an early release day, we're more likely to hold on to kids. They've got to stay for other activities, and once they're in the building, they might as well stick around for free pizza and be part of the conversation.
Put that plug in there.
That's right.
I need to ask whether this would be an appropriate time to talk to Principal Didi Bonico about the student representative? Or do we want to go to the policy? Let's wait. Please. All right. Even though the last meeting... Yes, I understand. I understand that we're seeing a pattern and we're talking about it. But it's, okay, but I mean, I couldn't talk about it before. Leah had brought up something, and I couldn't talk about it, and I just wanted to ask Paul one question. Oh, okay, no, one ask Paul question. So you had, you had talked about the fact that it really wouldn't make sense to have a group of students and rotating bases, but what I wanted to just ask, whether if we had, if you had an alternate, that's all, that's the only thing I wanted to say last time, if that might be something you would consider, having an alternate, so it would be a student. We'd love to have you here, because you know so much.
No, I know.
That's all. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
That makes, that makes perfect sense, and that'll happen.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? All right. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a student representative report?
Absolutely. So just to give you a bit of a, some foreshadowing, even though I'm going to be speaking to these items, I have one that's not on here, so I'm just to let you, that's like the anticipatory set, right? Remember from Madeline Hunter's time period, those educators? Yes, this is the anticipatory set, so even though you think I'm done, I won't be, so I have one item after. So budget, basically, just so you know, it's ongoing, I just put it there to say, yeah, we're regularly doing this. I know that Todd's going to speak to this through the T and L lens here in a few minutes, but it's ongoing for us as we continue to have different meetings all the time with administrators, with different leaders of different departments, with some of the department chairs that we're involving, so that work is ongoing. So I just want to report it out to say, yeah, everything's preliminary, but it's critical to our thinking as we look to establish priorities for next year. Remember that I had said once before, very often, almost always in our budget process, we look ahead a year. We don't just look at the year, we always look pretty much at least one to two years ahead of the work that we're doing, and so that's why we do the amount of work that we do through our process. We never just look at, oh gee, let's look at 2021, it's a separate entity. It isn't. It's part of, you know, ongoing. So that works on, continues. The tri-town, I had an idea, and I suggested it to our town administrators. I know that it's Lancaster's turn to host the next Tritown meeting. But we, it's been 18 months. And so I really would like, and I think this makes sense. I would like to look at a different format. For example, so I'm putting this out here for perhaps a little bit of conversation as to whether, and some feedback, if you think that this is okay. I've proposed that what I'd like to do is have the first Tritown meeting of the year hosted by us, hosted here by the school committee in Bolton, in this room. And my thinking is that we have so much that happens in the summer that I'd really like to fill in our Board of Selectmen members who come to these at that early part of the year and say, this is what we've done through the summer. Here's where we're at, here's the type of school start we've had. And it makes sense that we can also bring in some of our leadership. For example, Rob Freeswick, I'm sure that they probably are going to want to know, how did the leach field project go? Where are we at with the oil tank? And talk to us about the stow water, talk to us about, you know, like, and, you know, we got this major grant, an $80,000 grant. Well, that was only because we had our safety partners from our communities help us, working with Lisa and Rob to be successful with it. I would want them to know that. But it seems like I don't have any other place to talk to them about that. So I thought, I'd really like to see, in a perfect world, that we host the first one, and then we can line up the others. And so that, you know, so I suggested some months, for example. I think Lancaster, I want to say, has suggested December, I think, or January. And then, you know, Bolton the next, you know, and then Stowe would be the last one, like in May. And so I thought, if we can set the dates up right now and just say, like, we're committed to four times. But I also said, if there's no agenda, then we're comfortable with that. And then we won't have that meeting, and I'm fine with that. But let's start. I think they're important. I think it's important to bring, as a regional school district, our three communities' boards of selectmen together at least a couple of times a year. So I put that out there. I got really positive response from the town administrators, saying, that sounds great, that makes total sense. Let's do that. I told them all that I would be bringing it forward to you tonight for some feedback from you. But I just think it's really important for a couple of times a year to try to get everybody together. So I open it up for any thoughts you might have on that.
May I?
I think it makes tremendous sense. And last, the week before last, when I accompanied you, we went to the Board of Selectmen in Bolton, where I was able to see the productive relationship that you have established with them, and how open they were and how interested they were, and how much Brooke had to talk about, even at that point, you know, from the summer and from the opening of school. And so it makes, it makes a lot of sense to start off and have the three towns together and have the boards. So I'm in favor of it. Great, thank you.
Steve?
Well, you know, I've been complaining that we haven't had one in a long time. And I think it's important for us to have this interaction with the boards of selectmen. I only caution that we want to make it so that they come. So I don't know if you're going to have food like you did the first, the time we aren't.
Yes, I put that in the email. I promise that we will have time, who will prepare snacks for us. So, because they did a great job last time.
Those who heard about it and didn't show up were.
They were so right, yes. So, no, we'll have our food services to do that as well, yeah. But there's nothing that could, we can't force it. And even too, and I know that Kathy would probably say this after, but not everybody here needs to show up either. It's not, it's not a mandatory thing, right? But it's really, it's really more about dissemination of information and collegiality and a partnership. And I think that, I think Tritown strengthens that.
So I agree. I mean, if folks might come and can be here, that's great. But it is in the evening, there are other things that go on. And it's, you know, you're welcome to come, and it's not mandatory by any means. May I, Kathy propose a date?
We're just playing with dates right now, to be honest with you. We should, we should have that wrapped up, probably in the next, within the next week, I would guess, that we'll have some dates. We're hoping.
Joseph?
As civic minded as I like to think I am, I'm embarrassed to say that I've never attended a Tritown meeting. So perhaps you might elucidate as to how the format of the meeting is.
I'd be happy to, thank you. You know, sometimes I forget that. Thank you so much for bringing that up. So really, the, it is considered a formal meeting, so there has to be appropriate postings done and that kind of thing. So that's why, one of the reasons why we want to get the dates up now, because the last time we tried this, which was a couple of weeks ago, the postings got a little skewed, and so we weren't able to have the meeting because of that. So again, it's a regular meeting, everybody's invited. So that our board here is invited, our school committee is invited, and each of the board of selectmen is invited from each of the three communities. And they're pretty good about attending, to be honest with you. And so we'll all sit around, like this table will be enlarged, and we'll all be around here. They're generally televised, so like any meetings. Generally, they, we set, we set an agenda ahead of time of different things that they're looking at, that they'd like to have, maybe an update on or some discussion on, you know. Sometimes it's our school committee that has brought it to the towns. For example, like one year, it was about the culvert on Wilder Road. I remember that some of the school, because we were worried about our buses driving over that particular culvert in the state that it was in, you know. So sometimes you get topics like that. I think particularly for budget season, it's really good because you have a chance to kind of lay some things out. You know, I often wonder, though I don't think that this was the case necessarily, but for example, Lancaster might have had a greater heads up about, you know, the, where we were heading, for example, with regards to the oil tank and the, you know, the leach field in a different, in a different form if we had that Tritown meeting, because they would have heard about it a couple of times before it ever went to where it went, you know, in terms of the town and the meeting. So I think it serves a lot of purposes. Generally, Mr. Wrigley generally doesn't attend, but certainly Orlando attends, Donlow generally attends. So it's a really good forum, just, again, just for the sake of collegiality, having the snacks and the food and visiting and that kind of thing, but also dealing with the business too, and getting caught up in what their school district is doing. So, and I think because we work so well together, especially with our safety partners, that there's so much to discuss, so much to lay out and let our communities know about. So I think for so many reasons, it's just a great evening.
Can I follow up with that? Just a quick question. If we hosted, as far as the format is concerned, who would chair the meeting? Would you chair the meeting as far as?
Actually, it's generally chaired by the, and when we go to the, yeah, when we go to the communities, the host community is generally, so for example, if it was, let's say, for example, if it was in Lancaster, then it would be the Board of Selectmen chair that would host that particular meeting. When it goes to Bolton, it's generally that chair that hosts it. Here, it would be Kathy.
Okay.
Other questions? That was great. Thank you for doing that. I don't think sometimes to flush those things out.
Okay, are you on it?
Great, I'm good, sorry. Bolton Board of Selectmen meeting, I, right, as Mary said, I thought that that was fabulous. I really appreciated having you there that night. I have also sent out to both Lancaster and Stowe that we'd love to attend, and then if we're taking up on that, you know, we welcome you to come and join us at that. Again, it's about relationship building and partnering with your communities and having your communities be able to ask firsthand questions. Like they asked some really good questions the other night. I find that every time I go to those groups, they do, they have great questions. If I don't have the answers, I always get back to them. Like that night, they had a couple of questions. I was able to text people and get the answers to them within probably about an hour after I got home, you know. But it's firsthand information, and it's just really a great opportunity. So special thanks to the Bolton Board of Selectmen for inviting us. And Mary, special thanks to you for attending. That was, it was fun.
It was fun, too.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to Todd for the other items.
Great. Leah already mentioned today was the annual MasQ conference held at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. Several of our Nishoba educators and our staff participated in this annual conference. It is the premier educational technology conference that is held annually there, as well as ongoing high quality professional development, professional learning opportunities. They have a lot of webinars, they have a lot of resources, workshops, camps, onsite learning opportunities. I was pleased to report that we had several from Nishoba actually participating and actually presenting. And you attended one that you reported out on, so thank you for that. And so it was a great opportunity for several of our district staff to attend this year, and they always bring back a tremendous amount of resources to our classrooms and to our districts. So kudos to the teachers who presented and the faculty who went, and our Teaching and Learning Department for putting it all together today, so.
It's an amazing, if you've, if you've never been, if you can ever go, it's just, it's an incredible experience. It just really is an incredible experience. So I'm glad that you got the opportunity, you were able to go for the whole, the whole thing today?
The whole day, yes.
Yeah.
Good.
It's just, it's a fabulous experience, so that's great.
Next, oh, I'm sorry.
Before you move on, Todd, I wonder, I'm not even totally sure how my district is doing this, so I wonder, how are you going to share the information? So you had a small cohort of people who were participants, probably have so much in their head right now. How do you make sure that that information gets disseminated so that other educators who weren't able to go can still benefit from all of those resources?
Yeah, I mean, I think through the Teaching and Learning Department, we do so much PD and bring in groups so frequently that they, those are their opportunities to share. Same thing on the early release days, you know, when it's building based, et cetera, we tend to do that. And I think the two groups that presented today, one was Kim Early and her work with literacy and a novel approach at the high school and interweaving that with technology and how they do that. And then we went to Mary Marata's around design thinking, that she is already sharing out through the high school with the professional learning teams, so.
I think we work really hard to capitalize on that, take advantage of it.
And hopefully some of those groups will come here. And Principal D. Domenico already teed up the professional learning teams that we're going to talk a little bit about. So he talked about his own professional learning team. So our high schools' late start times are in full swing with really strong professional development opportunities that are being developed. You mentioned the Critical Friends groups that once were. I used to be involved in the Critical Friends group, and it reminds me a lot of that time that we, that we spent together as professionals. So really, as a way to enhance the professional learning at the high school, and the culture, the climate, multiple teams have been developed. I had the opportunity to spend some time with the Global Education and Global Learning PLT, and Greg Nelson is here today to report out on some trips. That was a great experience. And being just one of them, there's one on literacy, there's one around design thinking. Principal D. Domenico spoke about his. So through this work, each team is developing a purpose and a plan with a goal to improve the programming, the professional learning and the culture within the high school this year. And we look forward to hopefully bringing some of that work to this group by the end, by the end of the year, and some of their products that they're developing, so. And I know that Greg is going to speak to some of the field trips that they're presenting this year, and putting those together for the high school, and putting together a global education plan that they're working on this year. So I had an opportunity to visit with them last week, which was a lot of fun. So some good work happening at the high school, for sure. And the next thing, I know Brooke's going to talk about it as well, but in terms of visioning.
You start, you start.
I will start with our Teaching and Learning Department. You know that we spoke a lot about some of the changes that have been going on in the Teaching and Learning Department over the last couple of years, and since I came on at the beginning of last year. So we are really meeting regularly to talk as a team, but we're also meeting regularly, as you know, at least once a month, with our district administrators and our principals. And we're really looking at examining how that department functions and some of the changes that have been going on there. You know, we brought in our technology specialists last year. So we have two technology integration specialists that work with our Director of Digital Learning. You know, we enrolled a digital literacy plan last year. And you know, we also brought in Kim Early this year as a humanities lead position in the work that she's doing with our humanities, really in the secondary, our middle school and our high school, and the work that she's doing in that bridge kind of between the secondary schools and our district offices in Teaching and Learning. So as we continue to move forward and take a look at where the department is going, we certainly are taking a look at reimagining what the Teaching and Learning Department looks like, what its purpose is. And we continue to move in the area of innovation. So as we move forward, we want to, we want to kind of throw out there that we do have some, some changes and some thoughts that we have moving forward on what that department continues to look like and what it will evolve into moving forward. So our hope is to bring our ITF specialist and Kim to you in December so that they can share out the work that they've been doing, not only in the district offices with Teaching and Learning, but what they've been doing in classrooms with teachers and sharing out, sharing out their work. So I know Brooke wants to talk a little bit about it as well, so.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about it. And I said to Todd, this is our opportunity to kind of sit almost with a blank slate in front of us, to see what could, should this look like? We had a, I thought, fabulous meeting in here the other day around this table with our administrative team, as we just took a look and said, okay, what, what do we really need? What do your abilities, what do your staff, what do the teachers really need from this unit? And I think it's an opportunity for us to really kind of stand back and re, as you say, re-envision. We've even talked about changing the name. I don't know whether that's where we're going to land or not, but we've had that kind of discussion, and we're saying that what, what are our expectations, again, looking ahead and being progressive in our thinking about education 10 years down the road? What, what do we need to get where we want to go? And how do we get there? And so you've started a major picture escape in your office right now. And every time I go back in, we add another thin piece here, a piece there, as we think about it and whatnot. So we're excited about that. And I said to Todd, I really felt it was important that we let you know that we're doing this right now because we see an opportunity on the horizon to make some shifts. And our question to ourselves now is, what should those shifts be? And so we'll probably come forward, I think we're planning in December to lay out basically a skeletal piece of it before we go into the budget season, your budget part of the season in January, and say, this is what we're thinking. And again, we talked to you about Greg and Gary and the work that they are, they are doing on the days that they're able to come in, and Kim Early, and they're just doing phenomenal work. And I'd love for you to see what type of work they are doing right now and how that's playing out in our classrooms and the coaching that they're doing. It's just, it's just amazing.
It's nice to see the bridge between the Teaching and Learning Department and Central Office to the high school, which she's bringing over to the high school, and then with Gary and Greg then do, and then bring out to.
The most schools of the elementary, wherever they're going.
I didn't want to steal their thunder either, because I know they'll come here in December, but they ran a fantastic digital safety night last week at the Florence Warrior Cafeteria, where we had a bulk of middle school parents come out for that day, and they just did a fantastic, interactive presentation where they had parents on their devices, involved in doing what kids are doing online and in their classes with the technology. So it's those connections that we're making between the schools and district offices and those kinds of things that are really.
Yeah, and I think the last thing I would say too is, what I, what I love about what I'm seeing with the work that we're doing is it's tangible, it's authentic, and we can really implement it, and that's just amazing, so. So you'll see that coming. So that's that for that. Unless you have any questions on that, I will talk still about stow water.
No, we look forward to it. I mean, that's the need of what we do.
It is.
We have to talk about water, oil tanks and stuff like that.
More mundane thing.
Yes.
So I'll just talk quickly about stow water and where we're at. I'm not looking for anything from you tonight. I'm not looking for anything from you tonight. I, I, I don't think that we need to, like, I don't need a vote or anything like that. So this is more informational than anything else. And it's been so current that it was like, do we even have the time to throw this now into the, the superintendent's report? And I thought, no, we, we'll just leave it off for now. So the last two nights there have been meetings in Stowe with regards to where we're at with, um, remediating the situation with the water, with the PFAS and the water, um, in the, the Stowe buildings. Uh, keep in mind that those two buildings just yet, I know those of you who are in Stowe know this all too well, are still on the bottled water and will remain on bottled water until we can remediate this. And our kitchens are still using water pumps to wash everything. And I mean, it's, it, it is a big sacrifice right now. It, it's, it's not easy in those buildings. And I think that they're, both buildings are being commended for the work that they're doing and the effort that they're putting forward with this. And the kids have been phenomenal, like they're, you know, somebody was saying to me today, yeah, my child came home and said, yeah, I need two more bottles of water to take back to school tomorrow. You know, the kids are being so, they're so, you know. So, um, I think that from our end, this has gone, gone very well. Of course, the fix is the big question, right? And how much and who pays for it? And, and we knew out of the gate that it probably wasn't gonna be a less than $10,000 fix. We, we knew that. Our concern initially was that we were probably looking at about $100,000 to $150,000 each building. We, we really didn't know where we were at. You know that we, because we've reported this out before, that we've worked very closely with the DEP and that has continued to the point where they came up with a fix. And, um, I, I'm certainly not gonna speak to the details here, I wouldn't even try to do that. Rob really is the expert in this area. Um, they, they pulled together a plan and then it had to go before DEP for approval. So even though that they were part of it, then there was like another branch, so to speak, that had to look at and say, yeah, we'll give this a stamp of approval, this should work. So we're thrilled to say that we got that stamp of approval, so we're good. So I feel that our work in this area has been really solid. The next piece then was, okay, how much is this gonna cost? How much is this fix gonna cost? So, um, and we're, the schools are looking at this, but I believe the town of, uh, Stowe, I think, is also looking at it for their own building, I believe. Um, and so they're in the same kind of position that we are right now. Um, so we, we knew that they were going to have a town meeting, a special, uh, town meeting coming up. Normally, the school district doesn't, um, generally participate in that because we generally just participate in the spring meetings and that's kind of what we, we aim for. However, with this, with this water situation, it made total sense to us. We, in conversation, by the way, as you know I would do with Bill Wrigley, does it make sense that we put an article on now because we can see this coming? We need to get this fixed, we need to keep pushing forward with this. And he said, yes, let's put a placeholder on it. In the meantime, can you get your folks, which they did, before our FinCom uh, and, you know, the, the committees that they, that need to review it before it comes to the town meeting on November 18th, I believe is the town meeting. So, um, we've, we got numbers together, I wanna say late Friday afternoon, I think is when the numbers came through. Um, and, and these are preliminary numbers, uh, they're not holding fast, but this is where the preliminary numbers are right now. For center school, it looks to be 32,000, which is so far under the number that we thought it was gonna be, and 25,000 for. So to us, we looked at this and thought, oh, these are doable numbers, these are workable numbers for us, right? And so we're, we're, we're thrilled, uh, that, that this is where they, they came in. We feel really good about the work that's been done, we feel it's been solid. Um, so last night was the Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, and so these numbers came before the Board of Selectmen last night in Stowe. So we just want you to know that this has been ongoing, um, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we, we just wanna put a plug in like we always would, you know, please, parents, feel free to go out and, you know, uh, attend those town meetings and, and support whatever your heart says to support. So we wanna put that out there again, November 18th. Um, where do they normally hold it? Is it at Hale or? Yeah, I think it's normally at Hale School. So, um, you know, we'll probably, um, tweet something out with some, some details on that. But just so that you know that that's coming and that's where we're at. Uh, right now, it's costing us about $5,000 a month for water, just to bring the water in. So if you start thinking about this, this is a total of like 50-some thousand, you know? It, it's gonna get to 50,000 pretty quickly if we have to keep putting 5,000 bucks out every month for water. Uh, so it would make sense that, that we move forward with this. I wanna thank Bill Wrigley and Craig as well for all of their work in Stowe and working with us. They're just great partners with us, so thanks to them.
So if this is approved, um, what's the timeline for making the changes?
In a perfect world, you say perfect world, 'cause we know it's not. In a perfect world, we'd be set to do this at Christmas, uh, over the Christmas holidays, what we'd like to do. And it has to be done when, when no one's in the building.
Sure. Any other questions or comments for Brooke?
I just think the payback period is fantastic with, with these numbers. We'll have it, you know, you'll have it paid back by not having to spend $5,000 a month for water.
Exactly.
By the end of the year, so, or by, by the end of June, so it's, yeah.
I, I couldn't agree more with you.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I'm not totally sure that this is a question for you guys, but, well, I wonder if the town, why is the town putting it to vote with it being under the, the number that they have to?
No, uh, let me, so let me just step back for a minute here and let me explain that. Thank you for bringing that up. It's for the school district. If it's 10,000 or over, then we have to go to the town meetings. And this, these, both of these numbers are over the 10,000, so that's why we have to take it to the town. If it's less than 10,000, it's expected the school district pays for it.
Thank you.
So that's, that's the, that was a great question to ask, thank you, yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Brooke? Thank you very much.
That's it, thank you.
So now we are on to new business. And we are going to entertain the global travel field trips approval requests. So, so the first one.
Come on up.
Is for a trip to the Dominican Republic.
Well, I think they're gonna speak globally, if I might use the word. I think we're gonna, we're gonna talk about a, a broader view here, I think, and.
I'm just going by what's.
No, you're going by what's in there, so absolutely, yeah.
So somebody else start talking, 'cause I'm obviously wrong, go, Paul.
So, uh, Greg and Lauren, Greg is a history teacher, Lauren's a biology and environmental studies teacher at the high school, have been instrumental in starting to look at a global citizenship program at the high school. They're working with a group of other teachers in their PLTs, or in their PLT, um, to flesh out and imagine what this would look like at the high school. Uh, they've been talking to folks from other high schools as well as, um, representatives from travel companies. And I think it's a good time for it. Um, part of what this would allow for would be to plan trips out three, four, five years so that students coming in could have a sense, hey, that's, that's a trip I'm interested in. And they could plan with their families when they're, uh, when they're entering the high school for a trip later on. We, we want these trips to be designed so that students are encouraged to travel rather than, um, discouraged because of a price tag. Um, also, there are curriculum connections with all of these trips and Greg and Lauren can talk about that a little bit tonight. Um, I think we all had the feeling, I, I look back at last year and when field trips from the high school were brought forward, it seemed to be done in a kind of a piecemeal fashion. Each month, it was a different, it was a different trip. And what we hope to do in part is coordinate these so that we can come together with a plan laid out and, and looking at several trips. Um, that's the hope and that's what we're building towards.
Well, you mentioned the global citizenship certificate. And I think that is, um, I was in Concord when, um, that was started, so I'm, I'm familiar with it. And I think it's, it's helpful for people to know the larger context of what it is that these fit into. What does it mean for a student to get a global citizenship certificate? Because that's what makes, might make sense of, of the plan. So if you could speak to that and, and what the plan is and who's, you know, spearheading it.
Sure, and, and I understand, I'd, I'd be happy to.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna add that, thank you, Paul. I was gonna mention too, because Dr. McGuire's been actively involved in this too and, and I, I think in part of the visioning of this. And if I gotta step back for a moment too, for, uh, our newer school committee members, I, I'm glad, Paul, that you brought up last year because it just seemed like it was like a piecemeal through no one's fault.
That's right.
And the, the truth is, it was really a positive thing because, it was really because we enforced that policy. Those of you who will recall that, remember? Before, when we started saying, wait a minute, these trips are happening, we've never seen them? And we took a look at our policy and said, wait a minute.
And they're going next week.
Yeah, it's the whole, it says, oh, my goodness.
That was the difficult part, yeah.
That was, and so I, I, you know, I, I remember back to poor Nathan Pritchard, gosh, you know, he was such a wonderful man. And, and I, sometimes I felt like, and I'm sure he felt like he was a scapegoat at times. So we were like, wait a minute, what about this, this hasn't, you know? And so we revised the forms and to our new school committee members, we revised the forms, we revised the process. And so this is kind of like, I feel like this is our next phase, this is our next level to bump it up a little bit more and to have a, a more comprehensive overview. So with that, we, we had spoken and because this is absolutely within Dr. McGuire's wheelhouse, it made total sense to have him do the connection here and help to lead this. So I think there'll be times when you're gonna ask a question that probably Dr. McGuire would be the better individual to, to respond to it. Not saying, Paul, that you don't know the answer, but I'm certainly, uh, putting, putting, uh, putting out there that he can certainly respond to any of these as well. So you might even wanna take a, a step at this, this response.
Sure, yeah, so, um, so I have, um, helped develop a global competency program in one of my former schools when I was the Director of Social Studies and Global Education. And it was a big push towards, uh, global education, global competency diplomas, global citizenship certificates and whatever that might look like. Um, and then at the time, you know, we looked at some schools who were, who were looking at that. And at the time, GEM, G E M, Global Education in Massachusetts was very active in, in promoting that and other organizations such as Primary Source. And so what we did was we developed really a global competency, um, program or really what we, what we considered at the time to be a pathway, an educational pathway. And if you take a look at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education now and what they're really recommending is this idea of pathway programs for students in high school so that when they come in, they almost basically are focusing on a major. So that when they are done with their high school experience, they've traveled along almost a curricular pathway that's almost a concentrated field for them. And so this is one way to do that, devise a global, uh, citizenship or global travel and curriculum pathway over four years. But you can also do it in areas of STEM, you can do it in areas of engineering, you can do it in, in really any, in any area. This is, this is just one. So the idea is really to, uh, find a custom fit for Neshova Regional High School and what that might look like. And these are the beginning stages. These guys are working in this professional learning community and, and really asking the right questions to other school districts and interviewing other school districts and working with companies such as Education First, EF Education, um, and figuring out what might be the best fit for, for our school, um, in those infancy stages. But a lot of schools have developed what is considered like a global competency. So you go through a series of courses or a series of travel, a series of experiences that at the end of your four years, you graduate with that kind of seal on your diploma. There's also now the seal of biliteracy that the, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is working on. And Paul and I have talked about that. Um, it's allowing students to master a second language and taking an examination. And if they pass, they then get a seal of biliteracy on their diploma, which is all, you know, geared towards prepping students for beyond high school and college and career-ready. So that's a little background, but it's certainly trying to identify what's gonna work best for our high school. And, um, these travel experiences, I think, are kind of at the root and the foundation of figuring out what, what that is. And these guys have already had some fantastic opportunities to go train. And where did you go again? To Panama.
Two weeks ago.
Already and started training for what these trips might look like for kiddos and connecting it to the curriculum. So, does that answer your question, Cass?
I think one, one last point is, so again, the school could, I mean, should see that we're bringing structure to some things that, that, uh, previously were a little bit skewed. And so we feel really good about this. And I think the kids, uh, going back to what Paul had said earlier, will know when they come into grade nine. Oh, yes, here's, oh, I can see. So it, it's almost like pre-mapping it for them.
Sure, Mary?
Just a quick question, so this is preliminary tour where we don't have a global, um, citizen certificate at this point, our competency, this is the beginning of that.
This is the beginning. And so like I've worked with them and met with them to say, before we even begin that, let's lay some foundations, like first of all, like when kids come into the high school, it'd be great to, it would be great to kind of have a travel plan. Where are we thinking of going over the next four years? And starting to present some of these things to you folks in the community to say, oh, I'm, I'm in eighth grade or coming in ninth grade and I see that three years from now, you know, let's say that the band is planning to go to, you know, let's say Greece, for example. It gives them three years to plan ahead with their families, let alone to prepare for that trip and to know financially that's where I might, where I might wanna go or what I might wanna do. Or it may be a student coming in and wanting to go, wherever that might be. But it's, it's, it's putting a, a plan in place and then hopefully then tying it to, um, a curriculum that we can then build upon.
Right, and I just wanted to say that I couldn't be more in favor of this. In fact, my, my doctoral dissertation is on global education. So you have, right here, anything I can do to help.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, my, my only question, and I've brought this issue up before, is you come into high school and you've got this three to four-year plan of traveling all over the world, basically, but your family is never gonna be able to afford it.
Mm-hmm.
And I know in the previous, in previous, my, when I brought this up previously, I've said, I've been told, oh, there's money for, for those kids. But how do you get those kids to not be afraid to even bring it home? And, and, you know, breach it to their parents that, you know, the next, my next four years in high school are gonna cost you $15,000 in my world travels. How do we, how do we do that? How do we deal with that? And that, that to me creates, or has the possibility of creating different classes of students in the high school program. And I don't like to see that.
No, and, and none of us would wanna see that, I understand. It's an excellent question. Um, and it's one that is brought up again and again when we've gone to workshops and they've talked about equity and opportunity for kids. So it's, it's certainly, uh, it's on the front burner as, as we look at putting something like this together.
There is no resolution for it at this time.
Well.
I mean, we, we have, we have, we have scholarship monies that are available on an ad hoc basis now for this trip, that trip, the other trip. I noticed both of the trips are running about, about $3,800 apiece, which is one trip, one year. Um, so my idea, my, my thought of it being $15,000 over four years is not that far-fetched. And I, I think before, before we even, um, put this, put, put this kind of a program into stone, we need to be able to resolve that very thorny issue.
So from my research, there are districts, um, and what they do is the fundraising is part of the whole process of the trip. So that some families might be, you know, much better off than other families. So that equity issue, um, is, is definitely there. But when the fundraising is, um, is part of the whole process, which is something to, to think about, then, um, everybody has, has a chance to do fundraising. In fact, it, it's part, it was part of the requirement. So it starts to erase some of that, doesn't completely. And some of my research showed that districts that are more affluent have more opportunities for students as clear-cut to, to travel and to do things. But there are ways, creative ways to be able to start to make this, um, more equitable for every student. So it is, it's a really good question, but there are avenues to help.
Lauren, did you wanna say?
Yeah, um, so that was like, what we're working on right now is the four-year plan is our main one. And really, like, my favorite part is the equity piece of that 'cause when we met with Education First, they talked about, and different teachers talked about how the fact that when you have a four-year plan, yes, a student, we're not expecting a student to pay $15,000 and go on every single trip. We're asking you to pick one trip and set a goal for that. So a freshman is gonna be able to go as a senior, 'cause you can get a job babysitting and be setting aside that money if you have the desire and the willpower and you're backed by your parents to do that. It's not taking away money then, that's really the goal. My favorite part about the four-year plan is how equitable it is 'cause Greg and I have talked a lot about how we were worried about the equity piece as well. 'Cause I literally had a student this year who was like, oh, I'd love to go to the Dominican, but I had to buy a car. So I was like, this is unfair, why can't like she go? There's not enough money for this. Maybe if she had started raising money and known that there was something in eighth grade, that would have been more likely for her to do so. So we're not asking them to raise like that much. Also, like, our trips are more expensive because we did, like, mine was booked in April last year. If we had done it months earlier, it would have been a few hundred dollars cheaper.
I had a similar experience with my students. I had a few kids that either told me they would have signed up and did it because of the money. All right, a couple of kids signed up and then back out. And with the biggest thing, for next year, we will probably be trying to promote next year's trips as early as next month. Because that's what we heard from the other schools was if you can tell the kids before Thanksgiving, the year before, then they have a chance to say to enzoles and grandparents, I wanna do this next year. And if you can give me my Christmas gift by supporting that trip, that'll, that'll make it so I can go. And we had a lot of kids who, um, we had some kids who said, no, I don't wanna fundraise 'cause I, minimum wage is high enough now that I, I'd rather go get a job. And so we had a number of kids who did that, who came to me this, this fall and like, yeah, I got my first, first job these years so I could earn the money, pay for the trip myself. And some of them paid for themselves and some of them, their parents matched, um, or a relative matched. But yeah, the four-year plan makes it so that they can do that.
But you're right, excuse me, excuse me, Steve. Sorry. Leah, did you comment to me?
Well, I, so I don't mean to take away from your amazing efforts here, but one thing that I heard Todd just talking about was the likelihood of pathways. And I wonder if that is something that, because this has such potential for that, is the Teaching and Learning Department's revisioning, kind of moving in those directions around STEM, especially in engineering and.
Yeah.
And I would just put a plug in for the humanities to, you know, continue to create pathways.
If you look at his board right now.
If you go to my office right now, you'll see those boundaries. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and I, Steve, you bring up a really, really good point. And it is, it is always the first question that is asked. And when I sit on a panel around global education, it is always the first question is asked around finances. And, um, certainly same thing around, you know, pathways and building these opportunities and building these, these pathways for kids. However, um, you know, when we developed our global competency program, we made sure that it wasn't a requirement that you had to travel far away. In other words, global travel could be domestic. And so, or we sent kids to Montreal, which was a far more cost-effective way for them to get a global experience, speaking a foreign language or being in a culture that was, you know, considered global, or traveling to Arizona or Santa Fe. Um, or also allowing students to attend cultural events that were global in nature, that were, say, in Boston or New York City, et cetera. So we made it, you know, we made it diversified so that students could, could participate in and get credit for a variety of global experiences that were there.
I understand that. But once again, that, that, that kind of a thing is going to set up a hierarchy, especially among the kids. But once again, that kind of a thing is going to set up a hierarchy, especially among the kids. Well, we're going to go to the local things because we can afford that, but they're going to go to Italy, you know, or something like that. And I'm really concerned about that. Because while we tend to look at our district as a somewhat affluent, for the most part, not organization, but location or whatever you want to call it. We do have pockets here that each community has, you know, a food bank that they provide. So we know that it's not universal, that the affluence is not universal. And I really, I really have a problem with maybe some of the kids. And from our point of view, we can say, well, you know, it's not real. But from their point of view, perception is reality, and that they feel stigmatized. Because, well, okay, we can go to the, you know, the language thing in Boston, but we can't go to, you know, a trip to Italy as some of our peers can do. And I think that's a concern. It's a concern of mine, anyway, as we move forward with this. The program itself sounds wonderful, but once again, you know.
It sounds like that this is a consideration that the high school has as well. And my experience in working with the Global Competency Group in Concord was that they were really good at... First of all, it's not something that everybody wants to do. There were maybe, I think, the first year of the certificate, there were maybe five kids. And then there were 10 kids, and then there were 20 kids. But I think just the nature of the way the high school operates is that there is a knowledge of who might need a little bit more help than someone else. And I think that being aware of that and being aware of the kids who would really want to go but might not have the funds to do it and providing them with the assistance, maybe if they know, as I heard you folks say, that someone wants to do this as a freshman, that by the time they get to be a senior, those funds are available to them. So I'm glad to hear you taking the point. I think that this has been identified. But we would want to know as we move forward and approve these trips. And maybe something for Paul to share with Brooke, what the breakdown is. And we're just, this is just the first iteration of this, correct? So moving forward, but I most certainly would want to know that any child, any student that wanted to take advantage of this had the opportunity and that we could provide help with support or guidance, whatever it is. I will say that I'm glad you brought it up about some kids were able to get this cultural experience without leaving the country. And that worked for them because they really didn't want to go to Europe or go to South America, but they wanted the experience. And part of the experience involves being fluent, I mean, I guess in Concord, part of it was being fluent in the language, being able to understand, but also being in an area that needed... You were there to do community service, not to, you know, have a vacation. And there are plenty of places in the United States. I mean, just one example that I can think of, where Sue had relatives in Southern California. And that's where that individual went to have their cultural experience. And it has to be, one, they don't have to do it every year. But I think that as we're starting, I think it's an incredible program and that we just need to collect the data and look. But I know that as a school, all the schools tend to know who are the kids that might need some extra help and work hard to provide it. And as kids get older, that means they have the capacity to work and...
But just let me go, Jim, let me go back to my original thought.
Yes.
That there may be some kids who would like to do it but don't even ask because they know that from their family's financial situation, it is an impossibility. And somehow, we've got to let them know that there is an alternative for them to be included in these programs and not to just kind of be, sit on the sidelines. And that's not easy. I'm not saying it is, but it's, you know.
But I guess that based on my experience and based on my experience with Nishoba, the knowledge of the students and their backgrounds and what their situations are is astounding. Because I agree, there is, but it's just that I think that it's one of the strengths of this school system is the relationships that the faculty have with families and understanding family circumstances. So I hear your concern and I think that we have to keep that in the forefront. But I've always been impressed on who knows what about whom and who's willing to help out to the extent at which we've had, I always say unanimous when I mean anonymous. So I mean anonymous, people that'll donate money to be used to help out. But I'm glad that you raised it and I hear that it's at the forefront of that. Because you don't want to have an opportunity like this and have anybody who really wants to do it be left behind. So I'm sorry, Brooke.
No, I was just going to say, I can't see us moving forward without dealing with that in some way or another, Steve. So I, you know, it's not lost on us and it's clearly not lost on them. So, yeah, but I do want to go back to, because we kind of side, we kind of side around here a little bit here. So I want to make sure that you have the chance to say whatever you would like to say right now too about this. So Paul, let's turn it back to you.
I don't know. I guess I would turn it over to Lauren and Greg to talk about their respective trips.
Do you want to hear about Italy or Dominican first?
Let's do Dominican first.
Okay, nuts. The Dominican trip would be over February break. It's a service trip. So in the future, we're hoping to do like a cultural trip or language trip and a service trip as well as keep the remaining trips, like the German exchange and the Malawi opportunity that they have. But that's Dominican. They have about seven, eight students that are signed up right now. So I would be the chaperone from Nishoba with our students. It's a really good mix of students because you have students all the way from 10th grade to 12th grade. It was opened up to freshmen, but I have some interested, so the number could switch a little bit. But next week, by Monday, we'll know for sure. So they would be going to the Dominican and working with the mangroves and the coral reefs there, specifically for marine conservation, which is why I, as a science teacher, was very excited about that. It's a really biodiverse region, but at the same time, it's also a very threatened region, especially when you talk about the environmental issues going on there. So that's the big part I was really excited about. And like you talk to the kids, you know, like, it's a service trip. They're going to be working with the mangroves, working with the coral reef in this area. We're working with a nonprofit that, it's through EF, so they've established a relationship with this nonprofit, which is really cool. They also get to meet with different people from the Dominican and learn about like ecotourism and fishing because it's a big fishing community there. They're not really, they do visit to some cultural areas as well, but when they're working, it's more like a rural area. They're not like totally city because it's a specific service trip. So that's kind of a nutshell of what it is. So again, it's about like seven to eight students that would be going. We would be traveling with two other schools. We actually, when we went to Panama, we were meeting with other global teachers. So we're people interested in that. And Duxbury is going at the same time. So I actually met with their teacher there. She was awesome, if I can say that. So we know we're going with them and probably another Massachusetts school, which is also a really good opportunity for us. Like we talked about Skyping before we go so the kids can meet each other, which is a good opportunity for them to build relationships here in Massachusetts, not just in the Dominican. Yeah, so safety wise, just to like put that out there. They do, EF has people on the ground at the Dominican and they have a 24/7 phone service so that you always can be in contact. Yeah, so it's really good with that. We have a tour guide as well, so they're kind of taking over. And then both Greg and I are going on a training tour. So literally over Veterans Day weekend, I will be in the Dominican, learning how to lead a trip like this. So just going to Panama made me feel a lot more confident. But I will feel extra confident because I've gone to the Dominican doing the same thing because I have gone to the Dominican before, but not doing marine conservation, which is really exciting.
Questions for Lauren about the trip? Leah?
I guess I'm just having trouble reading this. Does it say the total cost of the trip is $160,000?
Whoa.
No, it says the total cost is $3,700.
But to the left of that.
It says the total cost to students, $3,700.
Can you look at your mom?
Alligator, Italy.
And that's the total of all students combined.
And the total cost, I'm sorry, the total cost of the trip is actually $29,600. And that's what that means, total cost of the trip for everybody that goes. If eight kids go.
$29,600 to the Dominican?
It's for the, if eight students go and each one pays $3,700, then the total cost would be $29,600.
I guess my question is, and maybe I'm just ignorant, that seems so high.
$3,700?
I don't know, am I wrong?
Well, is that include airfare?
It includes airfare and it includes like insurance and all their hotels and like their meals and everything. So the only thing extra that they would need is it spending money and tip money. So, which is usually like $30 or $40 for the week. So, because they tip their tour guides, because their tour guides are so amazing.
And EF Tours is not the one in charge of the marine conservation, are they? You partner with someone else?
They're partnering with the people who do marine conservation as a living. So the way EF works is that they work with nonprofits and they keep their, they check out the nonprofits. They only work with ones that they can build a really good, solid relationship with. They've had, this is one of their first service trips. Because the service trips, if I'm not mistaken, Todd, they came around like several years ago. They're fairly on the newer side. And this is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, like, they've been going to Dominican for a long time, considering so the last several years. And it's been really good for that. Part of the money too, like, if we, when we are going there, we're helping that group. So we're buying the stuff that we're using to like work with them. So it's also like you're, if you're, for example, say you were planting mangrove trees, which we won't be doing, but like in that scenario, you'd be buying stuff to help buy the mangrove trees because you're donating that services too, so that all of that would go. So it includes everything plus like the service into it so that you can experience that.
And so some of the costs is related to the actual...
Yes, the service that they're doing.
Another question? The, what's the cap on the number of kids right now? You said there were eight.
So there's 25 total. It's different for the cultural trips. But with the service trip, EF specifically limits it to 25.
But right now you have eight.
Right, so that's why we're going with two other schools to fill a bus.
I see. And is there a point at which you would have another chaperone from Nishoba?
If we hit 12.
Okay.
But we haven't hit 12.
Okay, but if you did, is there someone who would be willing to go?
Yeah, I asked her like six months ago.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I still heard from Greg.
Yeah. He's supposed to go to Italy with me.
Any other questions for Lauren? Okay, Steve, could you make the motion?
I'd like to move to approve the NRHS global travel request as presented for eight students and one chaperone to travel to the DR on February 15th to February 22nd, 2020.
May I have a second?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I'll ask a question after you get your second, I'm sorry.
You want to do the second while you're...
I'll second the motion for the purpose of discussion.
All right, questions?
I actually have a two-part question. One is, so we're being asked to approve this trip to the Dominican Republic and to Italy.
Yes.
So let me just ask this question. As far as what's presented to us, it states on the approval form that accommodations are to be determined. Why is that not set before, that's brought before the committee?
They don't book anything until we have our final numbers. So within the next month or so, they should start booking those things. Like, we don't have our flight information, like, we don't even know specifically like what everything is detailed until everything's established. That's why. But they have a couple of hotels that they usually use and they always check out the hotels that they do use.
So basically, the program on the ground in the Dominican Republic basically sets up where the people stay and they have relationships with the hotels. And so they, because I'm wondering how you set the cost without knowing the accommodation cost.
EF sets the cost.
If you read about EF is education first, they're a premier educational tour company. And that there's a lot of information about them and addition to the trip. So, yeah, they have connections there. But what is the nature of the accommodations? It'll be a hotel?
Yes, it'll be a hotel.
So let me ask the committee this. Do you want to wait until we know what the hotel is and before we approve? Or do you, what is your feeling about that?
I would just chime in on that EF, because you're working with a company like them. Oftentimes, the flight information and the hotel information comes within 30 days of leaving for the trip. So just so you know, working with a company like that, because they're obviously trying to book bulk rates on flights and as well as booking hotels and getting feedback from the numbers. Like she says, there'll be two other schools traveling with them. So making sure that they can get everybody accommodated into the same hotel if they'll be traveling on the same bus. So that if you're waiting for that, it would probably be within like 30 to 45 days before the actual trip. So just putting that out there. Because that's usually when that information comes through from a company like that. And that would be any company.
My second question is, you mentioned about insurance. What, could you elucidate a little more on insurance? What is covered by the insurance?
Like if they had to move last second for some reason, if the tour got canceled, that kind of a thing.
What about health insurance?
There's emergency travel insurance. If one of the kids had an injury where they couldn't even travel back, that insurance covers the parent flying over to Italy or the Dominican to be with them and to get them back. I don't remember all the numbers.
I guess my question really pertains more to if a student, and again, I'm fully supportive of the program and the travel. I'm not looking to throw a monkey wrench here. But I guess when you mentioned insurance, the question that I have is, let's say a student decides to go on one of these trips and they're injured and they require medical attention. How does the program, if you know, address those costs and concerns when they're in a foreign country?
That would be to EF.
Yes, I think so, but I think Todd probably has the best answer here.
Well, I know that PAC could probably speak to the insurance that the school district. Because we have field, we've had, we've had students go on field trips just to Sturridge Village where we've had a kid injured, right? Well, it doesn't matter really where it is. In terms of our school district has health insurance, number one. But also EF also has insurance. And I've been in situations where I've been in a hospital with a kid. I've been in a pharmacy with a kid who's needed a prescription and, you know, that is covered by the program.
My issue, and again, I'm not looking to, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but my, just so I understand this. Going with what Subirja said, if they're in the United States and they need medical attention, generally speaking, they're going to be able to secure those services through whatever health insurance they have. But our domestic insurance doesn't necessarily cover costs and expenses incurred in a foreign country. And the reason I bring this up is, is that I've, in my profession, I've seen this come up. And I've seen some people get into some real jams when they've been injured, when they've gotten sick in a foreign country. And the individual is then taken to the hospital and that becomes a real problem if the services are rendered and there's no payment there to be tendered. So I'm just wondering if the program that you utilize in the Dominican Republic, in Italy, whether or not if a child, it becomes ill or is injured, whether they cover the costs or there's insurance there to cover the costs of any medical procedures that are rendered in behalf of the child.
Do we know that? Do we know how that works?
I don't remember the exact numbers on the insurance, but it is meant to cover the costs.
That's what I was under, that's what I believed, but, yeah.
We can double check that.
I don't remember the limits. Didn't bring that with us.
I also wonder if it's an optional insurance or if it's...
EF says it's optional, but as leaders, we can say, no, this is required if you want to go on a trip. And both of us did that.
Okay, so these numbers are inclusive of that optional insurance?
Yes.
We didn't want to have some...
There's no way. Yeah, no, we're not doing that.
I feel that there are some questions that folks want answers to. And I know that we have, can Tyra?
Are there? I'm not sure.
Well, Joe's expressed...
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to say, expressed a concern that, about students being covered if they're injured overseas and what insurance picks up. Is it the insurance that they buy for the trip or is it their parents' insurance? Is that what the question is?
Yeah, look. Yeah, look, I, I had a conversation with an individual one time, that his wife was from Canada. And I've lived my life here in the United States with the understanding that Canada, being a socialist country, has socialized medication and medicine and that there's no issues or problems if you get sick up in Canada. But he said to me one time, he said, you know, if I ever got sick, I told my wife, put me in a car and get me to Vermont as soon as possible. So my concern is, I just don't want to see, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the students. I'm fully supportive of the trip. And you're saying that there's money there and insurance there to bring a parent over to the country. And the last thing I want is a parent in this district being confronted by administrators at hotels telling them, listen, you know, we're either A, not going to provide any further services, or B, we're not going to release the student until these accommodations, until these costs are paid. And I know you're probably sitting there thinking, what is this guy talking about? But I'm telling you, I'm, I'm not an educator. I sit here and listen to all this stuff you guys have about education. But in my profession, this happens and I would really hate to see that happen. And if there's insurance in place, then I'm taking up oxygen by even bringing it up. But I was just wondering about that when Lauren mentioned insurance, so. But to answer the Subirja's question, I'm fully supportive of it. I.
No, I think we all are, but if there are questions that can be answered by our next meeting and you guys want to put the vote off until the next meeting, we have the second, we have to do what?
There's plenty of time.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to bring the full policy from EF. EF is running both of these trips. I've traveled extensively with EF before. I'm happy to bring it in front of the committee if you want to look at it so they can see exactly what it is.
The other thing it would be helpful to get is, we might not know, and, and the plane's going to get them there. That's not the issue. The lodging accommodations, what the options would be, because there are probably two or three hotels that they would use. So it's, it's up to the committee. I mean, if you want to come back when there's with more information or if you're ready to vote now, what's your pleasure?
More info.
Leah?
I would want to not inconvenience them to come back again, but I would like more info.
Mary?
So if, if we had that insurance binder from EF right now that Todd could show us, I'd feel more comfortable. I mean, I am totally in favor of this.
No, that's what I'm hearing, but we have questions we want answered and that's why we do this.
I also think because EF has been, you know, it's reputable, it's been around a long, long time. Thinking, I've known about it for 20, maybe not 20 years, but, but this would help us too going forward with other trips, because then we would feel more comfortable that we know what that insurance means. And so if we could just put it off and get that entire, get that information, it might make a lot of sense.
I, I tend to agree with you. I mean, teachers have come out on a school night to present this. It would be, I, I feel like it would probably be an inconvenience to ask them again. And in the past, I feel like we've had votes where we've approved it pending certain conditions. I almost feel like that would be an appropriate avenue, so that we wouldn't have to drag you guys out again on a school night. I mean, it's already 7:30 for them to do that again. I don't know that it's all that necessary, if we can have it pending, you know, the release of the binder.
Jesse?
I, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, whatever the committee wants to do. I would say this though, and I'd say this from more of a civic-minded perspective. You know, if the district wants to run trips and do this, that's fine. But if you're asking me to vote on it, I have to say, it would be, I'd feel more comfortable voting on anything if the information was, you know, encapsulated. Like I say, I'm looking at the approval form, it doesn't say where they're staying, but it has a cost and I said, well, okay. And then there's the issue with the insurance and I, and forgive me, I'm not certain. I'm hearing that there's a lot of certainty regarding exactly what the insurance covers. If I'm mistaken in that regard, please, you know, let me know. But I'm just not hearing that, but you know, whatever the committee wants to do, I'm comfortable with.
I can just, overall, it is, because I'm looking at it now, it's the Global Travel Protection Plan. It costs $165 for each student to pay. It does cough, it does cover tour cancellation and interruption coverage. It does cover illness and accident coverage, which is all hospital bills, doctor's fees and medical transportation for illnesses or injury while on tour, as well as travel and accommodation expenses for a parent or family member to be with child while hospitalized or in doctor's care in the event of a life-threatening injury, baggage and property coverage and flight delay coverage. But I can also print out the entire policy for you folks if you'd like to look at it as well. If that helps, just to answer the question, but I can print out the policy and certainly give it to all of you.
The concern you expressed was what did it cover? And, and that's what it's covered, which sounds pretty good for $160.
I mean, I have traveled with them extensively and I have had injured students, I've had hospitalized students. I've, I've been in a pharmacy with a student who needed a prescription and it was all covered with the insurance plan.
Yes.
Were they in foreign countries?
Yes.
They were? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Does, any other questions about the insurance? It sounds pretty comprehensive.
But if you're not prepared to vote on that and you'd like me to print out the entire policy so you can read it in its entirety, we can, we can do that too. I'm happy to do that.
So I just have one question. Does it say that the individuals, you know, primary insurance would be considered first and then this would be?
It doesn't say that in this quick overview, but it may do that in the full, so I'm sure to look at that.
Okay, because otherwise, what a deal that would be.
So if our primary concern was wanting to know about the insurance, does that, does the information that Todd provided assuage our concern?
I have a question.
Leah?
So I feel better about the insurance piece personally. I, I think especially because it's a service trip, I think that the likelihood of injury might be greater, maybe not. But I feel better about that now. Do you guys think that it's okay that we don't know the accommodations? Are you confident that, that will, I mean, the Dominican Republic is not Italy. It's certainly not going to New York City. So are you, do you think that it's legitimate to approve something like this without knowing where they're going to be staying?
My first reaction is yes, knowing the company, but.
I just know the, I know the company so well and I know that they do not stay anywhere below a three-star hotel. I know if there have, you can go, you know, if there have been complaints in the past, they do everything they can to remedy a situation. If, if, if that is the case, I mean, that is, that is why you work with a tour company, because they are on the ground with you. They have somebody on the ground with you at all times. No matter what country that you are in, if you are in an emergency, there's somebody from the US in that country who can get to you immediately. But I know in terms of accommodations, there is a reason why you don't find them out right away because of what I explained earlier. Same thing with flights, because they're, you know, they're booking for groups of people and making sure that they can accommodate everybody where they need to. But I know EF does not accommodate in anything below a three-star hotel, as, as in the past when I've worked with them.
Can I answer your question? I, I'd be prepared to vote.
Thanks.
And I would too. I wonder when that, that timeframe comes along and we do find out the accommodations. If not, you would have to come here, we could do that.
Just tell Todd we'll tell us.
That's, that's what I need for you to go through this again.
And we can also reach out to them now. I mean, EF is, EF is a phone call away and we can say, our school committee really would like to know what are the options for our lodging.
Yeah, that's all we want to know.
Could you, could you at least give us a list of hotels where they will be staying or would maybe be staying? And we can provide that for you. They're wonderful in terms of, you know, working with, so they, they would provide that for us.
Well, I'm going to call the vote. We have the motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Yeah.
So you get to go.
Because we've done just the one trip, right, so we still have.
This is going to be smooth.
I've done this trip. I've done this trip.
Oh, I know. In the promo video.
So now we're looking at the trip to Italy, Venice, Florence and Rome. Okay, at least, again, TDA, we're going to get information. EF Tours, you've got the total, you've got, any questions? Anything you want to tell us about the trip?
I mean, it's not a service trip. Mine, I'm a history teacher, so going to see some of the most important cities in, in, at that time, at least they were the most important cities in the world or among them. So I'm really excited to take kids to see the Colosseum, the Sistine Chapel, Dodie's Palace. The kids are really excited to have pizza and a lot of, and some of them are really excited to see the Sistine Chapel. But that, those are some of the big things for them. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the kids to see a different part of the world, to experience a different culture. Encourage them to travel for the first time for a lot of them and see what they're capable of out in the world. A great opportunity for growth and to be global citizens.
And EF is going to lead the tours for you folks?
Same, same as with Lauren. We're, we're working with EF. We have the same advisor that we've been consulting with and making plans. I have 42 kids, only because that's at the limit for the bus.
Okay.
I have, I have three kids waiting on a waitlist. Every once in a while, it'll come up, anybody dropped? I wish I could bring all of them. I mean, that was, it's hard. I know I have one that's saying she's going to drop. So I've got one kid who, fingers, fingers crossed that she gets in the trip and who knows what will happen with the, the other two that are waiting right now. And I have seven chaperones, so we have that six to one ratio, including we have a nurse coming with us. Which I think, that was a recommendation Todd made. That's, with 42 kids, would be a good idea to have that extra medical expertise on the ground with us.
Questions for Greg? Leah?
Mine's more general about the program itself, just the larger program. Will these trips happen yearly?
What we're looking at is probably three to four trips a year. So some of, you know, February vacation like Lauren's this year, April vacation, and hopefully we can have some there in the summer. Because some trips, it'd be really hard to go to, say, Asia, you know, and, and we look to things like go on the Great Wall of China. Are you going to try to squeeze that in in April vacation or to go to Thailand? Or there's service trips that go to places like Tanzania that are going to take longer than, than eight to 10 days, which is what you can squeeze in a school vacation without missing time, which we really don't want to. And so a trip like Italy filling up almost immediately, we'd probably offer it again in three years. So the current freshmen, none of whom got to go to Italy, would have that opportunity again as seniors. And then we'd look at what else are the, offer the most educational value for the students so that we can try to build a strong rotation of trips. So that, you know, maybe the Dominican Republic this year didn't get a lot of kids, but maybe after some of the kids go, they'll go, that was an amazing thing, you've got to do that. And their younger siblings or that, you know, a couple of years later, when Lauren goes back there, you'll have more kids and continue to build relationships, which was one of the things we heard from some of the other schools, is it's not just the EF trips that they do. You know, most of them work with them or have in the past and have worked with other companies, which was good to hear about. Some of the best trips they do are the, the German exchange, what Eric Pritchard does is amazing. So we don't want to interfere with that. Others have done exchanges with, with, in Japan, they had a baseball team that came over and they were able to play baseball together and they had a group of kids that were able to go over there. And so I think this is just, like we said, this is the beginning and this is one aspect of that global citizenship program. And hopefully we'll be able to build significantly more over the next few years. But it'll be, it'll, it'll take some time. And I think, you know, to go back to the biggest issue that we have of that equity, I think as we build it, we'll be able to, to find ways to get, to garner support and find ways to build scholarship programs into it. And we don't have it now, just because we're just starting. But I think to answer your question, yeah, we're going to be repeating trips so that.
And providing hopefully priority to those ninth graders, for example.
Right.
Who didn't get the first opportunity.
And that'll be, with some trips, you prioritize based on class, because we're going to tie things to curriculum. So Lauren has trips that she's looking at that are really about sustainability. So if you have kids in a sustainability class, maybe you open it up to them first and they get to sign up. Certainly the language classes, you know, if you're going to do an exchange to Germany, that's for the, the German students. You know, we have a couple of Spanish teachers in our PLT who have never traveled with students, but really want to. And so we're talking about one or two of them working together to lead a trip next year. And maybe after a couple of trips, maybe then they can start finding a relationship, whether in Latin America or in Spain, where they can have an exchange program that runs similar to the German trip every other year. That seems to be the, what most of the school districts we talked to have done. But none of it's, none of it's set in stone yet. We're still really trying to figure out what's going to work best and trying to get things running.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, but.
Can I ask if anyone else has a question, please?
Of course.
Other questions or comments? Greg? Okay, is there anything different that you want to ask, this is, we have to approve the?
There is.
Yes?
So to your point about equity, I would say that not only financial equity, but also opportunity, equity around opportunity and kids falling through gaps, it should be something that you can.
One of the chaperones I went and asked last spring when I got approved was one of the special ed teachers. Because I want every kid in the school to have an opportunity if they want. And so bringing our transitions teacher along, the goal is for her to be able to come and say, okay, this is what I experienced. So that when a, a parent or a student says, hey, is this trip for my kid too? They can say, yes, and here's how we can do it. And we can create that plan for all of our students. So that's absolutely right up there with the financial issue. And also with EF, with our, we're going to have a follow-up meeting with all of the people that we met with. And one of the things they asked was, what else do you want to address? And I realized I, I didn't ask anybody, but I had thought about it and didn't ask. How do you deal with students with medical issues? I have a student who has diabetes and it's fragile. And she's heard about these trips and she goes, I want to do this. Well, you can. You know, people with diabetes travel all the time, but she's intimidated by the idea. And so I wanted to be able to talk to people, okay, how do you deal with your kids in special ed? How do you deal with kids who have medical issues? What are the protocols that your, that other schools have put in place so that we have that to build off of? Does that answer that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. I mean, and this is, I know we're spending a lot of time, but it's information we did not have. I think the context of the global competency program is important for people to understand because these things don't exist in isolation. They're not just random trips. They go, the, the intention is to make them a part of that larger vision of the global competency. So thank you everyone and thank you for all of the information. So if there are no more questions for Greg, would someone like to, I'm going to call on Steve?
Well, I've, I've got the sheet here, so.
Shh.
I move to, to approve the NRHS Global Travel Request as presented for 42, 42 students and seven chaperones to travel to Italy, Venice, Florence and Rome on April 27th through, I'm sorry, April 17th through 24th, 2020.
Thank you. Second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leah. Any other questions, comments?
My only, I would only like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I think this is great.
Great. I'm too. We're agreed.
I only wish we had that opportunity to go when I was in our school.
Ditto. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, folks, for your work.
Greg and Lauren, I want to thank you so much for your efforts here. I really do, appalled. Thank you so much, because it's clear to me the amount of work that you've put into this and I thank you so much.
We believe in it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
Okay, now let's talk about wrestling, shall we?
Should they post?
We will fall asleep. Okay. Todd, you're in. Sure on. There you go.
So my request is a little bit different.
Okay.
We're not going to.
Yeah, of course you were not going anywhere fun. But we've got members of our wrestling team that have been top wrestlers in our state and in nationally ranked right now. And because of this, and this has all happened during our regular wrestling season, but also in the offseason when they're wrestling for club and through the summer and this fall. And because of their success, we've been invited to some pretty top-notch tournaments coming up this season. So we've got a tournament in New York at Massapequah and a tournament in New York, it's called the Eastern States. Both of these tournaments are, so Massapequah is the toughest holiday tournament in New York. And we've been, have been invited, our top three wrestlers have been invited here because of national rankings. So this tournament, you know, what makes my request different is all these tournaments, the kids are traveling with their families. They are representing the showbo and my, our coaches are going down to coach them. So I felt like we had to come here in front of you to get approval and permission. But they are traveling with their family, they're staying with their family, they're eating with their family, they're driving to and from with their family. They're not going on a school bus. We're not providing, you know, transportation, hotel accommodations or food. But again, we are leaving the state for these tournaments, so I wanted to get permission. The Eastern States, my coach has wanted to get into this tournament for seven years and this is the first year we got him invited. So he's very excited to have this opportunity. This is a top 10 tournament in the nation to be invited to. And he's excited because he was telling me that the number one team in the nation will be here wrestling here. So that is big, so our kids could be seeing some of the top wrestlers. So that is big, so our kids could be seeing some of the top wrestlers in the nation. And then the last tournament is a tournament in Connecticut, which is called the Danbury Quad. So there's four teams that are there. And this is for, our entire team was invited, and we're the only team from Massachusetts invited to this tournament. Danbury has been the Connecticut State champs for numerous years. Timberlane is the New Hampshire State champion, and Xavier is the runner-up in Connecticut, and then there's SHOBA. So again, this is a top, these are the top teams in New England. These are all teams in the top thirty in our area, and again, one of the only, you know, nationally-ranked tournaments around that we've been invited to. And again, that one, we bring our fourteen top wrestlers, which is a full weight class. But again, they be traveling with their parents, they be representing SHOBA, our coach should be coaching that day-long tournament, but they're gonna be with their families the entire time. And this is typical for wrestling families, they're used to this kind of tournaments, going away for weekends, being away. Some of our wrestlers actually in Georgia a few weekends ago, not with SHOBA, because we can't coach yet, but they're with their clubs, but they do, they're used to this traveling. So these are the three that, you know, as we get going, these different tournaments are asking for us to, you know, confirm our confirmation that we will be attending, and so I wanted to bring this to you upfront, and get permission for us to leave the state for these tournaments.
Thank you for the lead time.
I was trying to make sure I got ahead of it as much as I could.
Thanks, I'm liking these dates. Does anyone have any questions for Tanya? Mike?
Tanya, I realize that the majority of the time, the vast majority of the time, you spend with parents and staying at hotels. Is there any cost at all to the students as regards to registration fees?
So the school would cover the registration fee, which is what we do for numerous sports, including, you know, cheerleading and wrestling, when you have to go to these tournaments, there is usually, you know, a couple hundred dollar registration fee. But once they are there, like I said, it's the parents that are staying in a hotel, and they're traveling with their families at that point.
Other questions?
I'm sorry, it's not here, does it need to be here, that the school is covering any of those registration costs?
I don't think so, because the, what we have on the other forms relates to what the students are responsible for. So there's no cost to the student, essentially.
Understood.
Who feeds the coaches?
They feed themselves.
That's fine.
Are you cool with that?
I'm cool with that, and Massapequah can be an exciting place, I've lived near, I've lived beside it, Massapequah,
I know it.
For fifteen years, so...
They let us, Massapequah, they invite us to practice there, and I guess they have a huge wrestling room, and it's, I saw pictures online, and it's beautiful, so that's part of going to Massapequah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I'm gonna have Steve.
All right, first motion, move to approve the NRHS varsity wrestling team's travel request as presented to Massapequah High School, Massapequah, New York, on December twenty-seventh, twenty-eight, 2019, to include three students and two chaperones.
Second? You're second, thank you, all those, any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Yes?
What, did you say three students?
Yes.
Or four teams?
So...
This one's three.
Massapequah's three, and the Eastern States is three, and then we're allowed to bring a full team to the Danbury Quad.
And you have a motion for each individual one?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
Okay, are those in favor? Post. Okay. Second, Steve?
Move to approve the NRHS varsity wrestling team's travel request as presented to Sullivan County Community College and Lockshell Drake, New York, on January tenth, eleventh, 2020, to include three students and two chaperones.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Post? Okay.
And number three, move to approve the NRHS varsity wrestling team's travel request as presented to Danbury High School, Danbury, Connecticut, on January thirty-first, February first, 2020, to include fourteen students and two chaperones.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I just wanna make a comment.
Yes?
This is so exciting, I mean, congratulations.
I'm very excited.
You know, the players to you, I mean, what an honor all three of these are, so I hope they have a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Miri. All in favor? Post? Okay. Thank you, Denaya, echo Mary Sennett, thank you so much, and congratulations, and thank you, Paul. Okay. Next, new business is the policy manual sections, oops, G and J, and just as we did the last time, I'd like to start with the, excuse me, let me get my... Okay. Just if anybody had any questions of anything in section J, if they wanted to ask about...
I'm sorry, say section G.
I'm sorry, I mean G. I have a problem with those two letters, I don't know why. Yes?
Kathy, I know you and I spoke offline about this, but there are a few of these policies where the recommendation is to delete the policies because the MASC didn't have the policies, and it seems like there are at least a few of them. And I wonder if there was sort of like a period of time where... So why the transition, I guess, why and when was the transition?
What, I don't understand your question.
So, for example, GBGAA policy...
Wait a minute, just a minute, please, GBGAA, yes.
Policy for health insurance.
Yep.
So, MASC didn't have these policies, they were SHOBA policies, and we've deleted them. Is that all because these types of actions, which are kind of either deletions or non-action, all because of collective bargaining, because they're now a part of the collective bargaining?
Not that one, I don't know how to answer that one, we will have to hold it out, and I will get the answer. If you're talking about GBGAA policy for health insurance?
That's right.
Under the Federal Affordable Care Act, and the following one, I recall when that policy was written, so I'm not sure why it was deleted. And we created them when the law changed relative to those topics. So I would recommend we hold those out. Anything else? Hold on until I can get an answer. Anything else in G?
I move to adopt.
Oh, wait, get, 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 get.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I'm not hearing anything relative to G, other than to hold out GBGAA and GBGAA-r-ADG for further clarification. Would, yes?
Can we have a little smaller?
No.
GB?
GBGAA.
A.A.
Yep. And they're related to policy for health insurance under the Federal Affordable Care Act. And then the second one, that, the -r-ADG, is procedural, so I would understand why that would be deleted, but we'll revisit this on the twentieth. Any other questions or comments about anything in G? Yes, Leah?
I wonder when, this is just a procedural question, when the policies are just from NRSD, does MASC still upload them for us onto the online?
Whatever we adopt is what they will upload. Now, when you say adopt MASC policy, and there are a number of those, it's because we didn't have a policy in that area, and so, we adopted theirs.
But they'll still review NRSD?
I was just gonna go there. So, you know, that's a great question. My concern about some of these that are just NRSD, and this is not being negative, I just don't know the answer to this. I don't know if these previously were run past legal counsel, that, you know, that they were vetted as MASC's policies are vetted. I know how much those are, so sometimes when you see just an NRSD, you kind of wonder what the background was, or why it was there, and if, in fact, it was vetted as opposed to the MASC's that you know were vetted.
Are you talking about G? Anything in particular in G that you're looking at?
It was just a general question, wasn't it, Leah?
Yeah, it's just a general question about any policy that is only an NRSD policy, that is not, I think, there may be some that are not even grounded in master general law.
That's exactly right. You're right.
All right, if you could identify those and send those forward to me, Leah, so I can talk to Dorothy?
Sure.
And send those to her, and you're just talking about the sections that we've looked at, right? Okay, that would be helpful, thank you. All right.
Just a quick general comment about that, so MASC has been, you know, looking at policies of districts for a long time. And so, when they come up with a policy, it's not just that it's MASC, I mean, they've taken into consideration, they've done this for lots and lots of districts, so that that's, I have a lot of confidence in what MASC comes up with as a policy, because not just, I mean, it's been vetted by them and by lawyers, but also, they continually look at districts like ours, and they've done this with lots of other districts that have been online with all their policies for a long time.
I thought you were asking about NRSD, are you asking about MASC policies?
So I...
No, Leah's comment, I thought you were saying about NRSD policies.
Yeah, I think that what Mary is saying is getting to, is that if it's just an NRSD policy, might we be out of step with the law?
That's exactly right.
Well, I'm asking you to send those forward to me, as far as I know, that that was the nature of this work. And there was only one that we found that was an outlier that I'll speak to a little bit later. But if there are others, Leah, that you found that are just NRSD, again, please send those forward to me, and I'll discuss them with Dorothy. So, any other questions or comments about G? Steve?
Move to adopt and inform section G of the NRSD policy manual, except sections G, D, G, A, A.
GB. GBG.
GB, I'm sorry, I can't read my writing. And GBGAA-r-ADG.
Okay, can I have a second, please? Second, thank you, Mary. All in favor?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes?
Again. So, should we also exclude any potential policy that fits into the category we were just discussing?
Is it listed on this?
So there's one, for example, GCA, that says staff positions. It's an NRSD policy, but it's, it doesn't have...
GCA says staff positions, no changes.
Yeah, so this one doesn't have, say, a mass general law citation, or a public law, or a court case that's driving it. So this is an example of a policy that I wonder if MASC has.
I'm looking it up, please, hold, please. So this one is GCA, staff positions. Staff positions, I have it right there.
Well, it's saying, if you look at the asterisk, it's saying MASC and SHOBA policies match, so what's, what's the issue here?
I don't know. So I'm looking at file, staff positions, it's filed GCA. I'm looking at the recommended, the one that, the cleaned-up version that was originally adopted in 2001. I would have to check why the source, MASC slash SHOBA, but if it says no changes, then I think it would be if we have MASC slash SHOBA, it means that they could be the same.
The two policies, it says so, if you look at the asterisk, under the note, it says the two policies match, so...
Yes, okay.
So should we keep the source on the policy?
They're going to, when this is updated, it'll reflect the source is MASC, and the date will be updated.
Okay.
All right, so we are approving them in form, and they will be, the citations will be updated. But where it says adopt an MASC policy, that means we did not have a policy. And where it says none, it means that the policy was acceptable as is.
Mike?
Okay. So, are we ready to vote? We had a second, all in favor of accepting? Opposed? Thank you, all right, now we move to J. Okay, any questions, comments about any of the policies in section J? Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Trump. On the markup file, it's designated as file JEB, it's titled entrance age.
Yes.
And I noticed that the redlined language states that initial admission of children to the first grade or other grades will involve a consideration of both chronological age and the readiness of the child to do the work. I was wondering if the superintendent could...
Is that something that was crossed out, Joe? If it was, if it's redlined, then it's not...
No, it's not, it's not, it's not redlined, it's underlined.
Okay.
So it looks like it's an addition.
So, hang on one second, hang on, let me get there, section of markup for review. So, it is... JEB, entrance age.
Yeah, that's one, yeah.
Okay, hang on. Oh, where is it? There we go, right there. Okay. So, what I see for entrance age, this is, this is assignment of students to school, JEB, entrance age. I'm looking at the clean copy that Dorothy sent us for school committee review. That was the one that the policy committee put forward for recommendation. Parents living in the communities of Walton, Lancaster, and Stowe may register their school age, children beginning the age of five. On or before September first of the year, they are expected to enter kindergarten. Initial admission of children to the first grade will involve a consideration of both chronological age and the readiness of children to do the work, proof of presidency required.
Okay, that's what, sorry, that's what being proposed, correct?
That's what the policy committee worked on with Dorothy, and is putting, it put forward for our, for our consideration.
So my question, perhaps best posed to the superintendent, would be, could you give me an explanation of what that means? Because I can't understand what that particular added language means, especially in context of the legal references. Because I'm not, unless I'm looking at the wrong citation, I don't understand how general laws, chapter fifteen, section one, G, or six oh three, CMR eight pertains to determination of readiness for children to do the work when you're looking at an initial admission, so...
I have no idea, I'd have to take, no, I'd have to take a look back, I'm just being honest. I'd have to take a look back at those two sources and compare them, so I don't have an instant answer for you on that. I'm not sure what the language is.
Okay, we'll put that on hold, we'll get the information. Okay, any other comments or questions about J? Mary?
So, JIB, now, a nun with no asterisk is, is what? It says, it's a student involvement decision-making? So, that nun, is a nun with no asterisk?
You know, this wasn't done, I had to go through it and pull out the, this was blank, I had to go out, so I didn't do that whole asterisk thing.
Okay.
But, so if you have a question, that's it to it?
Yep. So, it says, per MASC, student who are at our school committee meetings meets the requirement to student advisory committee. So, and we do have the new book, thank you very much, the one we had before was, of mass general law, was 2018, this is, you know, 2019, so I recycled the other one. So I looked it up, and so, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-eight, M, student advisory committees. School committee, I'm gonna read it, everybody ready? I'll read as quickly as I can. School committees of cities, towns, and regional school districts shall meet at least once every other month. During the months schools in session with a student advisory committee, to consist of five members to be composed of students selected by the student body of the high school or high schools in each city, town, or regional school district. Members of such student advisory committees shall, by majority vote, prior to the first day of June in each year, elect from their number a chairperson who shall serve for a term of one year. Said chairperson shall be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee, without the right... without the right to attend executive sessions unless such right is expressly granted by the individual school committee. Said chairperson shall be subject to all school committee rules and regulations and shall serve without compensation. A school committee may designate a student outreach coordinator for the purpose of ensuring the establishment of a student advisory committee and regularly informing the advisory committee of the school committee's agenda. So what we have here, you know, it's, it's just, it doesn't seem to fit. And, you know, MASC says that the way we do it, which is the principle, appointing a person, takes the place of this. Well, it doesn't sound the same.
It shouldn't say it takes the place of it, it says it meets the requirement. And I also asked Brooke if we could look at what other districts do.
We did, we reached out.
And we reached out, and we were from seven districts who have a member of the student council come every other month. So if it is, as far as the law goes, according to MASC, it is, we are compliant. And when I read that, and it's in our policy as required by the law, the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session, et cetera. When you read what the letter of the law, what the requirement is, it is, and I'm looking at JIB, and the essence of it is, as required by state law, the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session with its student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by the high school student body. The chairperson of the student advisory committee shall be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee, without the right to attend executive sessions unless such right is expressly granted by the school committee. So when I, this is why I contacted Dorothy. So it would require the school committee, the school, the high school, to provide us with a student advisory committee composed of five students elected by the high school student body. They would have to meet with, this committee would have to meet with that group every other month while school is in session. To me, that is, and this is my opinion, a cumbersome process. And I don't know, looking around the table at people who actually work in schools, their availability during a school day, to have a whole, I mean, I don't know what we would gain by following the letter of the law. And it sounds as if there are some school districts who don't even do what we do. So when I presented this to Dorothy, and she goes back and she speaks to her colleagues, what we do meets the spirit of this. And I know what it says, it's not the letter of the law, but I don't know that we're required to aspire to that.
You know what it reminds me of? It reminds me of school councils, where, in school councils, the parent representatives are elected by the parent groups. The faculty representatives are elected by the faculty. The only people who are appointed, basically, are the community representatives. It's not that easy to get them. And as a community representative on a school council, it's your whole constituency of the town. So it sounds as though this is something like that in the sense of having a student advisory committee. Now, what I understand is that our student, our school council at the high school has quite a few students on it, more so than many other school councils have. But the good part of that could be that somebody from that could be considered to be a representative here. What occurs to me is that we're all about decision making. We're all about student voice. I mean, our, our purpose here is to educate students. And students are, there are more students, they're our constituents. The only group that's larger than the students is the citizenry of the three towns. Other than that, it's the students. And schools have, some schools have community councils where it's representative of how many of each group. So students have more seats on a community council. I'm concerned that student voice, this is student involvement in decision making. And what we have right now, and I'm not casting any aspersions toward our student representative who gives us the report and then leaves, this says that the student representative would be looking at our agenda ahead of time and bringing that back so that the student advisory group would know what was going on in school committee. And if we had someone here who would, if we had questions about students, or if they had issues, if they were looking at what we're making decisions about and they wanted to give some input, they could give it to their representative. So it seems as though we're not in the spirit of this. And we might as well just change it, although I think then we're not going by law, and say that what we have is a student representative who is appointed by the principal. And that's what we have. And not have any of this other, which I think makes us, you know, so MASC knows far better than any of us do, but to me, this whole thing... Well, that we say is how we do it. And I really do believe that there should be, see, I'm all about students. And I think everybody around this table is about student voice. And it feels as though we're not giving students enough of a voice here. And I think at least if we have the student representative and an alternative appointed by the principal, perhaps chosen from the school council, where there are a whole bunch of students and not as many parents and teachers, maybe that's the way to do it. This really, you know, strikes me wrong.
I get it. I want to hear from everybody else now. Leah, what are your thoughts?
So I said this at a previous meeting. I think that the representative to the school committee should be elected and not appointed, because ultimately that person should speak for the students. And even though this is not the case, I believe, I believe that the student who is currently with us, as amazing as she is, and she probably would be elected, she's not currently truly a representative of the student body.
Steve?
My feeling is that considering the three major areas that the school committee is responsible for by law, it would be more relevant for a student representative to deal directly with the superintendent and the principal as opposed to the school committee. But that's just my thinking, because our responsibilities are very strictly delineated by Massachusetts law.
Mike?
Yeah, I think Mary brings a good point to the table, that there are some pretty stark contrasts between what we have in place and what MASC suggests. I guess, I guess I don't, you know, this being the first time I've heard of this, I guess I would hold off on opining about this until I educated myself more on whether what we have in place is appropriate or what we have in place is a misinterpretation. So I guess I just, at this point, I just don't, I don't know.
Joseph?
I couldn't agree more with what my colleague from Stowe said about, you know, the limited areas of our jurisdiction here. And I couldn't agree more with you, that I think that what the statute requires is cumbersome and time consuming. And I respect what my colleague from Bolton is saying about, you know, and my other colleague from Stowe about student input. But I agree with the chair. I think it's time consuming and it's going to be cumbersome to do this. That being said, I do agree with my colleague from Spolton, that what the statute says is what the statute says. So I'm, and you indicated that you believe that we are in compliance with...
Well, I ask MASC, because I brought it up when I read the policy, just because I know what we do, I know what that says. But I also look at, as I pointed out, the practicality of that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, I couldn't agree with you more. And let me just say this. I'd be curious to what MASC says, because I will be frank with all of my members here. I am not an adherent to what, you know, because MASC dictates it doesn't necessarily make itself. And I look at the statute, and I'm wondering to myself, how many other school committees throughout the Commonwealth are doing this? I don't know of any, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know of any. And I don't know how many are in compliance with. And does this particular statute serve a purpose? Obviously, the legislature thought it did at one time. I'm just curious as to, you know, what are other districts doing? And how are they addressing this? Because frankly, Madam Chairman, I couldn't agree with you more. And I know that's not going to sound, going to resonate very popular with some of the students and maybe some of their parents. But again, I agree with what Steve says. We have a limited area of jurisdiction, we have a limited area of authority. And I'll be frank, I don't want to sit here every other Wednesday and listen to gripes and things that are outside of our control. So I'd just be very interested to know where other school districts stand with something like this.
Okay, Mike?
As we're kind of talking about this, and, you know, things are coming into a little bit more focus, I wonder whether it's relevant or not that our student rep is essentially a high school student rep. And ought the representative be a representative of all students? If that's even possible? Or should it just be a high school rep, since that's our flagship school? I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, I think we would have to look in, I don't know if it says in the general laws, Joe, if you're looking at that, but...
It does.
It does.
High school.
Mike, I'm sorry, Mary?
So usually it is a high school student. And I think it's been very interesting that our representative, our high school representative has talked about the other schools. That's not been my experience in the past. Usually the high school representative talks about what's going on in the high school. But I read this a little differently, that the committee will meet at least once every month while school is in session. I read that to mean September through June, not during the school day. Didn't you say?
And that's my, well, that's my interpretation.
I don't, well, so I think it's, it's not summertime, where we continue to have some meetings, but it would be September through June. And so I think it would be worthwhile. It's in here, it's in mass general law, that that's what we're supposed to do, so...
Leah?
I would say that it would fall more into the spirit of the law if that representative were elected. Had she and her alternate been elected, I think that we would be closer to the spirit of the law, probably not letter of the law.
Well, excuse me, well, I would like to say something.
Okay.
What I'd like to say is that, when I read this, for us, what it would mean is another meeting every other month with this group from the high school, which the high school would have to promote as, and have a whole school election to select five students to be part of this council. And I am all for kids. It's been my life, my life's work. And I don't want to set up a false expectation for kids that they can tell us stuff that we might not be able to act on. And I'm also thinking about, about time. Everyone's time here, we're committed to these meetings. I mean, we made a big effort to make sure that as many meetings as we knew we were going to have this year, we knew about, so we could plan ahead. I am, I think that if folks want to explore it more, it has to involve a discussion with somebody from the high school. I do want to talk to MASC to see what other schools are doing. But I think that, you know, if he does not, she comes and she reports on things that are going on throughout the district. And as long as I've been on the school committee, that's what the student rep has done. And it has been, been great. I worry about even on school council, and it's wonderful that there are kids on the school council, but how do we know they really represent what the student body is thinking? How do we, how do they get that information? How do they, what do they put out to bring information in? And that's my concern. I think it's in spirit, it's a great idea. I want to know what kids think. But when you set up a system and have someone come to represent everybody, what system is set up for them to get that information, to present to us? So that's why I see it as cumbersome. If it's not during the school day, while school is in session, and it's outside of the school day, that's a whole other set of meetings for us, because it says the school committee. So, yes, Mary?
So to go along, there probably is a way to be more in the spirit of this. If someone, and maybe, maybe the other, the alternative, could, alternative representative could be elected. But there needs to be some way for, and this is the other side of what you were just saying, for the students to go back to some constituency, maybe it's student council, somebody to say, this is what school committee is doing. Otherwise, the student representative is just for our benefit here. Here's what's going on. Every single one of the schools in our district have newsletters that if we want to take the time, we can read all the things that are going on in the news. So, well, well, that's nice. What happens, it doesn't seem to me that students are learning more about school committee and what we're doing. And that would be the other part of it, that she or he or they would have a constituency to go back to and say, this is what's on school committee, this is the agenda. So I don't see necessarily, I think what, I don't see them necessarily, the five people meeting with us. I think there's a way to do this with the student representatives, and I totally agree with you, that we need, you know, the principal of the high school here to talk about this.
But it's not for us to dictate to this, this is the other thing.
Because we make policy.
We do make policy.
This is exactly, exactly what we do. This is, this is our province, policy.
But we don't dictate to the principal.
No, but we make the policy.
Right.
And then the procedures are carried out by administration.
Right. But I would want to know where the interest is at the high school with students wanting to be involved in this, that, because we're making assumptions about what kids, it's just another layer of something. Now, I want to get more information from Dorothy. We can hold it out, as we've held out a couple of other things, and come back and revisit it.
Let's do that.
But if we follow the letter of the law, then it creates a whole other set of meetings and expectations for the high school, et cetera. If we begin to tweak it as a policy, who's not to say that there's, we don't continue with what we're doing? Or there might be, if there's a vehicle already set up within the high school to represent the students, the student council, why not take advantage of that?
Might be the way.
So I just don't want, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about, I know the importance of the student voice, and there's work being done at the high school to get at that. That might be a conduit for us.
Okay, I just want to say, it's here, it's in this.
I know that.
Okay, all right. That's mass general law.
It's in there, too. Steve?
I just want, I just want to comment that, following up on what I said before about the three areas of responsibility that we have, which are of vital interest to the parents, which is, and the citizens of the towns that we represent. But in reality, I'm none of the business of the students. They are not involved, I mean, you want to take back our agenda. They are not involved in hiring a superintendent or even interested in who the superintendent is, or the evaluation of the superintendent. Maybe on a periphery, they might be interested in our policies. And the number three, which is the budget. They have absolutely no say in the budget. They have absolutely no interaction whatsoever with the budget. I don't want to hear that the fish served last Friday was dry, or that the history teacher didn't do this. I think we're trying to carry the letter of the law much too much. The idea of, oh, they should have the agendas so they can go back and, you know, talk to their student council or their... This is, this is not a high school student's job, or his responsibility, or even his area of concern. It's the area of concern of our constituents who are voters, the other set of constituents who are the parents, who are also voters. And, you know, and the administration headed by the superintendent.
And I think that, in terms of the student voice, I know that in the process of hiring a superintendent, there were no students on the hiring committee, but there were surveys that went out. I don't know what the input from students were, but they went to parents, they went to community members. But I think this warrants further discussion, further clarification from MASC. And unless there's anything new that someone wants to add, yes, Mary?
The name of this, a student involvement in decision making. One question... One question is, do we have to have this policy at all? Because it doesn't, you know, I would like to have this, and I would like to be more in keeping with the liberal, as well as the spirit of the law. But student, and I would like students to be involved in decision-making, but is it necessary? There's such disparity between practice and what they're saying here, that we need some guidance.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree. Any last words on this before I close the discussion on JIB?
So moving forward, I am going to be in touch with MASC for clarification about the law versus practice. What are other districts doing? I know that Alita was able to hear from seven, and what they do is have someone come and report from the student council every other month. And it'd be good to know what other districts do.
I'd like to point out, too, though, that we heard from seven out of over 300 districts. So I just want to put that up there. I would be caught, I guess I'm just saying, I'd be cautious about taking what those, even though seven did. Honestly, I really, and you know I don't like to get involved in this, because policy is really your domain, it's really not the superintendent's domain. But I think we need to do what's right for NOSOPA, whatever, whatever that is. And sometimes, it's not always in agreement with MASC. There are going to be times where it's going to be okay for you to say, this is not, this is not our area, this, this doesn't feel good to us, it doesn't feel comfortable. I also agree with Mary in the, from the lens that, because we, we've dealt with this as administrative team. We're only put, we only put forward what we know is true and authentic to the work that we're doing. If it's not, we're not, we're not articulating it, we're not putting it up there. So I would also agree that if we're not doing it, and this is not where we're going to go, it shouldn't be in policy. So I appreciate and respect the fact that you brought that up. I also want to go back to exactly, I think Steve makes a really valuable point to always consider when you're thinking about student voice and school committee, because your role is really around those three things. You know, it's a $55 million plus budget. I don't know what students could bring to that, you know? Really, I worry about opening that Pandora's box just a tad, because they have voice at other places. And you hear, you know, even with Paul, with doing, when he's trying to do with the engagement, only 10 kids coming, you know, and it's not like they're not pushing it out there, they are, you know? Like, I just want to be cautious that whatever we do, we're setting ourselves and the district out for success, whatever that looks like.
Other questions or comments?
Let me collect some more information, we'll come back and we will revisit it. I don't think any, I think we have demonstrated as a committee our interest in hearing from students, through their presentations, through their communications with us, and what bubbles up from the schools. And I think it's important to note that in all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high schools, there is a vehicle for students to be involved in decision-making and to be heard as individuals. And I think that that's really important, but we need to figure out where this works for us, just as, as Brooke was saying.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I also make a suggestion? Here, looking at the time, it's, I know it's already past 8:30, and I know we've had an executive session planned as well, that we were planning on probably taking at least 20 minutes to half an hour. I'm wondering if we should table some or any of this, and light of the time, because we really need to kind of on top of your game for the executive session, so.
Do you want, do you have, do you want to adapt, adopt J with those, with the exception of those two sections?
What I'd like to, what I would like to suggest we do, as we've adopted G with, I think we've pulled one thing out. I think that, I don't want to rush through this, because there are some other things that.
Well, there are two things, I'll add.
I needed to discuss. But I think they can wait, we're ahead of our schedule with, in terms of adoption. I had thought that this would be done at the end of December. So we do have some time. I think we put it on the agenda to come back and look at, finish looking at J. And there are a couple of things that were outliers from last time, that there's no urgency to discuss. So I think that if we could put Policy Section J under Alita for the 20th, and under Old Business, please keep Policy D E D slash D F G N C M. And then we can go to the Business Manager Report. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Pat can probably talk pretty quickly.
Do we need a motion for that?
I beg your pardon?
Do we need a motion to table? Because I'll be happy to make a motion to table.
We've never made motions to table.
Really?
But, yeah.
No, they never do. It's, you guys.
And you know what, Joe? We don't have a policy about it either.
But if you like this, too, Joe, we'd be happy to.
We've tried, but it's, it's failed every time.
No, wait, and be on a committee, you don't have to be tabled, so.
Okay. Pat, you want to comment?
You can be quick with this, Pat. I'm pretty sure we can talk this through quickly.
Yeah.
So we've tabled all the policy, right?
Yes.
The policy's tabled now. Before Pat speaks, can I say something?
You may.
Thank you. I know that this is tedious work for all of us sitting around here, and I'm sure the viewers at home and our press people, I know this is tedious work. But I also want to stress that it's critically important to work to a school district, just like a Bible to a church, that lays that foundational document. That's how I see our policy handbook. It is a foundation for us. It's a thing that we always go back to, it's a thing we always refer to. It's critical, but we have to get it right, and we have to make sure it ties in with the appropriate case law and current case law and all that. I know this is, I know that's a hassle going through, but I am so grateful for the work that you're doing and the amount of engagement, so thank you very much for that.
No, and I also want to add, I know we went on a kind, kind of long about the field trips and et cetera, but that's, what they were talking about in terms of the global competency and the field trips and how they all, those are conversations we've never had around the table before. And they're important, because they speak to the educational experiences that we're providing for kids. And so if there's a point at which, you know, people feel it's going too long, or, you know, if there's feedback you want to give me about the way I handle the discussions, et cetera, I'm very, very open to it. Not now, because we don't have time. But you can speak to me, usually you can send me an email. But I welcome the discourse, I'm glad that people are engaged, as Brooke says, and have questions and are interested. And I think when you're dealing with, I mean, you know, we have to do budget, superintendent, and policy, but to understand the things that this district provides for kids is of the utmost importance. And I think that that's a real strength of this committee, that we can focus the time to fill us in on that stuff. So hi, Pat.
Hello. Now, it's some real fun stuff, because you know what we're doing with our money.
Yeah.
I have the treasurer's report up first. This would be for the month of September. You can see that we have a lot of money in there.
It goes down as fast as it comes down.
It comes down. It looks good.
It always looks good, just for that.
Yeah, everything, we're in fine financial condition in regards to that. Want to bring up the results of operations. As far as results for operations, this is very early in the school year. Most of our spending has not even taken place, and everything, you can see the projected expenditures is pretty high at this point, which is to be understood typical, typical. Does anybody have any questions about anything in particular?
The only.
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
The only question I would have is, you know, I mean, just so early in the, in the year, we're looking at a almost $60,000 deficit for Mary Rowlinson. Is that caused by a specific thing?
Yes, that was staffing, based on enrollment.
Based on enrollment numbers. We had, we had to add some additional staff. We had no choice on that. And that, as you know, Steve, that happens always in September, when the numbers come in, and you've got move-ins or whatever, and then you've got, you have to relook at your staffing. That's all it is.
That's really the only significant thing I'm looking at.
Yeah. Does anybody else see?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the superintendent's remarks. I know you've mentioned this in the past. Could you just speak a little bit more about what we're seeing in Lancaster? Because just from a visceral standpoint, we're seeing a lot of out-of-state license plates in the parking lot at Mary Rowlinson. So it does look like we're seeing a real spike in.
Yes.
Okay.
You're, no, you're absolutely right. But I, but I would tell you that across, it's interesting you bring this point up, because we just had this conversation, the administrative team, the other day, because it's not just Mary Rowlinson, like you're seeing it there, because, of course, that's your school, you know? But we are seeing that across the district, and you're absolutely right, out of district license plates. We're also seeing a large spike with special education needs as well. I would say that that's, it won't surprise me that we don't see a definite increase in our costs in that area, too. Because a lot of, a lot of what we're seeing is, some, a lot of new move-ins are coming in with some additional issues. That's not being judgmental or anything, I'm just saying, you're going to see that on this sheet of paper in, in, in about the next two months or three months.
What do you, I'm sorry, can I, just, yeah. What are we seeing as far as numbers are concerned? Do you have any rough figures on those?
For, for, no, he's, no, he's not talking your kind of numbers, he's talking numbers of students, physical numbers of students, right? No, I, actually, that's something we generally report on after the October 1st count is submitted, which is submitted, to be honest with you, final numbers aren't until November 1st. We generally come in after that and say, here are the numbers. And so you'll, you'll see it, we'll do an actual report on that. But, but I do think, if I could just make a quick comment, what you're, I don't suspect that you're going to see, those of you who were sitting around this table last year, some of the huge spikes in numbers and whatnot, you know, Mary Rowlinson is, was probably the only outlier this year where we had that happen. But I do think that you'll see, just because I know the cases that we've, we've been involved in, I do think you'll see some additional special education costs. But, and we're waiting to see, of course, with the facilities, you may still see some additional costs incurred there that aren't anticipated. And again, part of it's just the high school, or the buildings themselves and the ages. So, but I don't think that, and, and the flip side of that, that is, you won't see a big amount of money that comes in, for example, like we had last year with our insurance that ultimately, you know, helped bring forward a surplus for us this year that we didn't count on. We're not expecting that this year at all. So I think this year, you're going to see your numbers are going to stick a little bit closer to what we anticipated, in case we have some unanticipated costs.
Steve?
Two things. These out-of-state license plates, we're saying? I assume we're doing our due diligence and.
Oh, yes, residency?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
No, they're all, they're all legitimate.
They're just moving, they're moving in, and they haven't changed their license plates.
Yeah, that's all it is, but they're, they're moving here to stay.
I have the police notify them, they've got 30 days. Or we, or we, well, put a, put a, put a lock on their cars. Because that's the law, 30 days. The other thing I would like to ask is, since I wasn't here for the last two meetings, the vehicle, we did get the new vehicle, thank you, that's.
It's right in the back parking lot here.
Outstanding. What's it, the truck with the bucket lift on it, I saw?
No, no. That's national brand.
I know. I realize that. I realize that.
No, it's right up against the building.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
And no further questions? Okay.
Timeline.
The timeline. This is something that Alita has just put up, I'll just cast this out both ways. So, yeah, I don't know, I'll be looking on the screen or whatever. The top half of this report, basically all this timeline, is what we've been working off in the district. And I created this back in August and to, to let the administrators know pretty early on what their timeline was going to be like this year for our budget. Now, the bottom part, I sort of filled in report outs as I thought they were going to happen. Well, as you can see, in the month of October, there are a couple of things that haven't happened. I haven't brought them forward to you yet, but that's because I haven't had the opportunity.
At the bottom?
Yeah, the bottom part. If, if anything needs to change, I think that's an opportunity for you to decide when you want to have that information, based on what is above that, because this is how I'm getting the information from the administrators.
But Tom has been in to speak about food services already, and I know the early education, we've, we've put that on very deliberately, so I'm not concerned about those, those things. I did say to Pat, though, today, and, you know, I just, I put this out as a general caution for us, especially, especially, I know tonight needed to happen for the policy the way that it did, and I'm very respectful of that. But your next couple of meetings are packed, in fact, and I worry about the amount of time that you're going to be spending, or we're going to have to start bumping up additional meetings, because there, there's just.
And we're missing a meeting, we're missing the.
The November 6th. Which we normally do anyway, quite frankly, that's a norm for us. So I just want to put it on your radar, that these are going to be packed meetings coming up, so. That's it? Anything else? That's it? Okay.
I'd like to just say that one of our goals for the year, the school committee goal, is to, for the committee, especially the new members, to be in service relative to the way that the budget planning works. I know this lays out a timeline, and it might be something that the Budget and Warrant Committee could take up in terms of what else we need to know as we're working through the budget. If you're new to this process, what is it you need to know? And then come forward with recommendations to Pat. And if we have to have a workshop an hour before a meeting, then so be it.
We will, but I think it's premature at this point to, to do that.
But I, what I'm suggesting is that on Budget and Warrant, you have two new members of the committee, not just a Budget and Warrant, but as, as people that are new to the committee, what help, what understandings do they have to have as we work through this timeline? So it might be a meeting to have where you talk about those things. And come up with some suggestions for Pat on how to help people better understand the budget.
Okay.
So, yes. So we're not going to meet.
No, how about November 20th? November 20th?
Okay.
Five o'clock. I'll send out the information, okay?
So I was just looking, this is very helpful. Did you recognize that I could speak? Did you?
No, but I understand who's in there, so just, you know, that part went right by me.
No, I thought you gave me.
I might have, yeah.
I thought you gave me a noise.
I did.
Because we weren't, oh, good. Because we weren't going to meet, Stephen, we were.
Until after the first.
After, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't fit.
No, but we will, we will, we will meet for the first time on the 20th of November.
All right. And, and I just wanted to say that this is very useful, thank you. And it does say that there's a budget workshop, 1:25.
Yes.
Yes. That's a Saturday.
Okay.
We go through every line item, and the different departments come and make presentations to us.
That's what that is.
But what would be good to get a sense of is for those folks who are new to the process, what would be helpful in helping you understand it? I mean, I've been on this committee for five years, six budgets, whatever, and before that, I had familiarity from whatever else I did. So I can't presume to know what people need to know or don't know.
All right. And so just one other comment. Joe, then we would have to have the ad hoc not on the 20th. That's why I didn't put the agenda forward for the ad hoc committee. We were going to have a meeting on the 20th, but we'll, we'll defer to.
Yeah. All right. They can go December.
Okay. All right. That's all. Okay. Leah?
Could you just quickly clarify, Pat?
Sure.
What it means by school lunch rates?
Well, if, I think that was, I think Tom mentioned that at this point, if there were going to be any increases in school lunch rates, we would have announced them at that rate.
That kids would pay?
Yes, if we had anticipated anything in that, in the next budget process.
Steve? Yep. Are we ready to?
Well, I, just, just as a future agenda item, I would like to talk about, or have I would like to talk about or have the superintendent talk to us about school start times, especially based on the fact of California's new law.
All right, let me, that is on...
That's on the parking lot.
To discuss that. I don't think we're at that meeting. But it's in the, if you look at the planning calendar, it is one of the things. And some of the things that are on the planning calendar for future agenda items, our priority is the budget until we know that we're in the ballpark of getting it. So if you're, the things that you want to talk about don't get on an agenda, it doesn't mean they'll never get on an agenda, but we have, the budget is our priority. And you'll understand why as we really get into it, so. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Pat.
Okay. There are no subcommittee reports. There is no correspondence of note of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, Steve?
I guess so. I move to approve the consent agenda of October 23rd containing the meeting minutes of October 9th, 2019, and warrants of October 25th, 2019.
Second?
Second.
You can take it.
Thank you, Mary.
Give it to Joe. Your favor? opposed? Okay, items to be considered for future agendas. Steve's item is already on a future agenda. Any other items for future agendas? Mike?
I'd like to propose having a discussion about the school committee's policy on responding to residents' correspondences.
Okay. We're not going to discuss it? If that's, anything else about the topic? If that's the topic?
Just, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, no, but that's the topic. School committee's response to constituents' emails.
Correct. And I guess I would add that as a member of the Personnel Subcommittee, I wonder if that, the notes from that kind of discussion could be embedded into the school committee manual?
Well, that's what we would discuss. So to put in the parking lot, Alita?
I got it.
Okay, great.
School committee, discussion on school committee policies in response to constituents.
In communicate, responding to constituents.
Responding to constituents, yeah.
Yes. Okay, does that capture it? Okay. And then people can make suggestions for what they want in the manual. Okay, Steve?
Okay, I move to go into an executive session at 8:50